Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 22th Regular Meeting of the Sebastian City Council. Would you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Grant Foster? And then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hill.
Before we pray, I just want to remind you of Psalm 133. It says, "Behold, how good and how pleasant it is when brothers and sisters dwell together." My question is, Father, would you give this council unity, would you give this wonderful staff, this wonderful council unit, your faith and belief, and all of us who have guided thoughts, given direction, given wisdom, and they deal with all many aspects of our wonderful ... We pray that you give them ...
Dodd, the wisdom to be able to lead our wonderful staff. You'd give them the encouragement to be able to share the ideas and the thoughts and the direction that needs to be had. And so, Lord, we just pray blessing on these meetings now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maude.
Here.
Councilmember Gilliams.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We are in the process right now of moving to an attorney-client session.
Mayor Dodd.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Dodd, if I could have just 30 seconds, I'd like to publicly make a statement. I need to apologize to Vice Mayor Maude for a couple of statements I made at the last meeting and apologize to the citizens of Sebastian. There were a couple of inappropriate things I said at the last meeting. I'm very sorry for those things. Shouldn't have said it. I do not believe that Charles is a coward, so I apologize. I just wanted to make that public prior to this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. We're going to enter into an attorney-client session with the city attorney or outside counsel. This is pursuant to Chapter 286, Subchapter 11, Section 8. It's in order to discuss pending litigation related to the Pelican Island Audubon Society, Graham Cox, and Diana Halloran versus the Sea of Sebastian, which is case number 19 AP 142. Our discussions will be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy related to litigation expenditures in this matter. In attendance will be the court reporter, who will be taking down everything that's said in the private session. They're actually called a shade meeting, although we more like to call them executive sessions than shade meetings. We will also have City Attorney Manny Anon Jr., outside counsel Mr. Dan Abbott, city manager Paul Carlisle, myself, Mayor Ed Dodd, Vice Mayor Charles Malte, city council members Jim Hill, Pamela Paris, and Damian Gilliams. We estimate no more than one hour will be needed for this executive session. After the session, we will begin in public in this room, where we will go through the remainder of the agenda for the regular meeting this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go upstairs, can I ask one question?
Let me finish this, and then you can do that.
Sure.
Because I want to get through this preamble stuff.
Sure.
All right. We'll ask the city clerk whether the agenda was publicly noticed and how the agenda was noticed regarding the forthcoming executive session.
Yes, sir. It was posted on the lobby corkboard in City Hall, and it was posted on our website, and it was distributed to a standing email list as well as you councilmembers.
Thank you, ma'am. While we're meeting, the door to the room will be secured and locked. Those who are authorized to attend, and no one else may be in the room. The entire meeting will be recorded by the court reporter. The contents of that meeting are confidential until the completion of the pending litigation, at which time the court reporter's report or recording will be made public. Now, Councilmember Gilliams, if you want to say something.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under the rules of procedure, after the executive shade meeting upstairs, do we come downstairs to have a vote to put it on the record exactly which way we're going?
No, we don't.
That's not procedure. Can I ask the attorney to weigh in on that, and so he gets on the record to tell me what the procedure is?
We can discuss this during attorney-client session meetings, is my preference, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good.
Okay. Well, we'll let the record reflect that I checked with my attorney, and that we're supposed to have ...
Does your attorney represent the city of Sebastian?
Let me ...
Does your attorney represent the city of Sebastian?
Sir, please, let me just get this on the record. Please don't interrupt me.
You can say what you want to on the record. I'm putting on the record for now that Damian Gilliams' attorney is not an attorney for the city of Sebastian.
I'm aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And whatever legal advice he provides, Mr. Gilliams, is not bound to the city of Sebastian.
And I understand that, Mr. Mayor. Just so that I can be heard, I just want to make sure that the procedure is after the shade meeting, we're supposed to come down and vote on it here in the chambers.
Okay. We are going to go to the executive session at this point.
Thank you.
Off this agenda, but you all have in front of you an item from Mr. Carlisle that he's asking that we add to the agenda. Does anyone have any objections to that? It is the school resource officer program, and he has to sign the contract with the school board on that, and he just got it, so he didn't get it in time to get it in the agenda.
Well, my concern, Mr. Mayor, is that the city attorney requested in the past that he review all contracts, and I didn't see his signature on there, so that was a ...
Do you have an objection?
Now, the other question I had is that the budget meeting the other night, they said there was three resource officers. Maybe I can get clarification from the city manager.
If we have it on the agenda, then we can talk about it. So if it's not on the agenda, we can't. So would you like to put it on the agenda or not?
Is this time of the essence?
This is to add it to the agenda.
I understand that, but is it time of the essence? Does it need to be rushed through? Can we just put it on the next agenda?
I'm just asking whether we want to add it to the agenda or not. And the city manager has asked us to do that. Go ahead.
The next agenda item would be after school starts.
Okay. Put it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone else have any problems with this? Then it becomes item 13G. Okay. Now, we're on to Proclamance, Words, and Brief Announcements. We now have a presentation by the Garing Group for Employee Health Dental Vision Insurance Program for '20 and '21. I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
Mayor.
Yes.
Is there a clicker? All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Dustin Keen, Senior Benefit Consultant with the Garing Group. I'm here today with Mark Rodriguez, Senior Analyst with the Garing Group, and we will be here presenting the October 1st, 2020 Employee Benefits Renewal. The past few months, we've been working with staff and also negotiating with your carriers, so we will walk you through the process today as well as go through the recommendation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark Rodriguez, who will bring you through the PowerPoint.
Thank you. So very briefly, we will go over your benefit program as it stands today. We'll also give a brief overview of the benefits industry overall. We'll go through the renewal process for next year's plan year, and then also, as Dustin mentioned, we'll provide our recommendations and then take any questions you may have after that. So, under your current program, you have medical insurance with Florida Blue. Currently, you have a high deductible health plan. With that health plan is a $1,500 employee-only deductible, $3,000 family, and then out-of-pocket expense maximums are $4,500 employee-only, $9,000 for family. In addition to that medical plan, you also offer your employees a health reimbursement account. Currently, funding for that account is the city funds $2,500 for the employee-only tier and $5,000 for family coverage. So that helps to cover not only the deductible costs, but also a large portion of the out-of-pocket maximum. Your dental and vision insurance is currently with Humana, and your life, LTD, and Employee Assistance Program is with Lincoln Financial Group. So as far as the insurance industry, some events that have occurred in the past year or so. The Cadillac Tax was repealed December 20th, 2019, under the Further Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020. The Affordable Care Act, PC费, also known as the Patient-Centered Research Institute fee, that has increased to $2.54 per member per year for the coming plan year. In this current year, it was $2.45, so a slight increase to that. The health insurer fee, that was suspended for the current plan year you're in, but it's going to be reinstated for the 2020 plan year, and then after that, it will be fully repealed for 2021 and moving forward. That fee is actually built into your premiums. It accounts for about 3% to 4% of your premium cost. And for 2020, medical inflation cost is projected to be anywhere from 6% to 8% on the medical side, and then 11% to 12% on the prescription side. So as far as your renewal goes, with your medical insurance, Florida Blue had initially proposed a 3% increase to your premiums. That's with no plan changes. However, working in conjunction with your staff, we went back to Florida Blue to try to negotiate that down, and they did come back with an offer that was contingent upon the city not RFP-ing the medical coverage. So, in other words, not going out to get other quotes from other competitors. So that offer actually was a 2.9% decrease. So it went from a 3% increase to a 2.9% decrease. And I just want to add, with the city's plan, you are around 100 enrolled employees. With that, Florida Blue does not give us your claims experience on an ongoing basis, so we're not privy to that information. However, with a 2.9% decrease to premium, it's safe to say that your members are utilizing the plan correctly. You have a healthy population versus last year, and that leads to that 2.9% decrease. So although we can't show it from a reporting standpoint, based on what we see from a 10% to 12% average increase a year, a 2.9% decrease is very, very good, and that leads us to believe your employee population is healthy. Then moving on to the dental plan. So initially, Humana proposed an 8.9% increase on both your base and buy-up dental plans with no changes to the planned benefits. We went back to them. We weren't able to negotiate the actual premium rates down, but they did offer to credit the city with $6,000. So with that $6,000 credit, that essentially brings the increase down to 2.7% increase. Vision insurance is through Humana. They propose no increase with no changes to your plan, so that's a flat 0% increase. And then with life, long-term disability, and the employee assistance program, with the basic life, Lincoln did propose a 25% increase. 25% does sound like a high number, but when you look at what that means in terms of dollars, it's an $1,100 increase for the whole year. And then there was no increase to your voluntary life, long-term disability, and employee assistance program. So all those lines, no increase. So our recommendations, based on the information I just shared with you, is to accept Florida Blue's medical renewal at the 2.9% overall decrease. That's guaranteed for one year. Make no changes to your health reimbursement account funding. That's been working well so far. Accept Humana's dental renewal at the 8.9% overall increase. That comes along with the $6,000 in premium credit to the city. That's guaranteed for a year. Accept Humana's vision renewal of no percent increase. That one seems pretty much like a slam dunk. That's for one year. And then accept Lincoln's renewal of the 25% increase on basic life with the 0% on all other lines of coverage that are with Lincoln. That's also guaranteed for one year. This all equates to, when you add up all the various lines of coverage together, it equates to a 2% overall decrease to the city and a 1% decrease to your employees in terms of the total cost. And we'll take any questions you may have at this point.
Any questions, anybody?
Mayor Dodd.
Councilmember Gilliams got it. I'll get to you in a second, Councilmember Hill.
Yes, sir.
So if you were to put this out to bid, what kind of leeway time would you need to put this out to bid for next year? What's your lead time for RFP?
So for next year, for October 1st, 2021?
Correct.
We would like to start that RFP process right around June-ish, to give us enough time to go out to bid, receive quotes, evaluate it, and present it to staff, and then ultimately to council.
Is there a reason why we didn't go out to do an early RFP, Mr. City Manager?
We originally had started to do the RFP, and with the COVID, we didn't think we were going to get a good response. And we were happy with the fees that we had and the service we had. And any disruption in service at that time, we didn't feel was going to be appropriate.
Right.
We didn't tell Blue Cross we weren't going to go out to bid, but when they came up with an offer to leave it the same, if we didn't go out to bid, that helped us, and we directed them to try to even get a better cost savings, which they were able to do.
Great. What is your fee?
Our fee is commission-based, so we get standard industry commission, which is a percentage off of the premium.
Right.
So I think it's 5% off the medical. It's actually 4% for the city. 4% off the medical, and then 10% on the ancillary line.
So, and this is a million-dollar policy, correct?
Roughly, on your medical, roughly $1.3 million, correct?
$1.3 million.
Correct.
Okay. Does the city participate in a health network where the employees participate in exercising, where we can get lower rates in the future, Mr. City Manager?
We do not currently have a wellness program, and there are some issues with wellness programs as well. Forced wellness programs have been challenged in court. They can answer more of those questions, but there's limitations to what you can do, and the benefits to it sometimes are not worth the risk. But you can't force an employee to do it as well.
Right, right, right. Just out of curiosity, the county, the Sheriff's Department, they're big. They have a lot of employees. Is there a reason why you don't partner with them?
You know, we've had conversations in the past, not with the city in specifics. I will say that what you're referring to is a consortium.
Correct.
Where public entities get together and they pool.
Correct.
We find that they have not been successful in the past, because what happens is the group with the good claims experience, they want to pull out, because everybody else is holding them down, and then all of a sudden, it falls apart. With that being said, when we have gone out to bid in the past, FMIT, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, in essence, is a consortium, and then they extend fully insured premiums to the entities. So it's almost like having a consortium, but having your own plan, control of your own plan. So in the past, actually, they haven't been that competitive, but that is something that we look at when we do go out to RFP, for them to quote, and that gives you that consortium type of feel.
So that's part of your due process when you ...
Absolutely.
And do you check to see what the claims are with the school board, the health, I mean, the school board, the hospital, I mean, the Sheriff's Department and the county?
Well, with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust.
They do that?
They handle all of that, and then they, based on your demographics, will give you a rate. So they look at your ...
Do they determine if they're high-risk with their claims?
Yes. Yes, they do. Yeah. So for the city, like I said before, we don't have claims experience. We don't get claims experience from Florida Blue, your carrier, so they rate you based upon your census, your demographics.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Dodd. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the hard work that the Garing Group has done here, as they always do. They've been a partner of ours for many years in the city of Sebastian, and they've helped us to keep the cost of these insurances down for the citizens and for our employees. So, great job. I appreciate it once again. I'm not surprised that you came in with a great number.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No? Flashberry Malte, you got any? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item B. Anyone else want to pull A or C?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Brief announcements, if you want to cover.
Oh, brief announcements. I'm sorry. Little wording. Okay. Brief announcements. I do have a brief announcement. I have two, actually, but there's one on here. The Community Development Department has mailed out postcards to remind citizens of the Stormwater Credit Program, the Septic-to-Sewer Grant Program, and the Facade-and-Sign Landscape Grant Programs. There's money available in all three of those, so if you have a business, and your business is on a piece of property, and you can do something with your stormwater system, you can get a grant against your stormwater assessment fees.
It's credits.
Credits, not grant. Credits, not. Credit on your fee as opposed to a grant in that case. But you can substantially decrease your stormwater fee cost if you do something with your property. The Sewer-to-Septic Grant Program, or Septic-to-Sewer Grant Program, is for the CRA, and it is available to anyone who is not connected to the county sewer system at this point in time installing septic tanks. I believe the county has already discontinued the forgiveness that they were doing on the impact fees.
So they've reduced it, I think, to 80%. And as the months go on, it reduces the impact fees less and less.
Right.
So anyone who's not on the system, for one, it's the right thing to do, and number two, the funding is available.
Yeah. If you're a resident or a business owner, and you have a building in the CRA, the longer you wait, the less money you're going to get, because the county's going to continually increase the amount of their assessment that they're going to put on you as they go forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is it possible that the city manager can make a request to the county because of the virus that they can extend that, and just a letter of request for the people? A lot of the state agencies are deferring.
What's your ...
It's consensus of the council, but I don't know that this is an obligation because of the enterprise fund that they, I can ask, I can always ask if it's consensus of the council.
I don't have any problems. Anyone in the council have any issue with him asking that question for the county?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
Yeah, that's ...
There's no problem. Councilmember Hill, you have any issue with him asking that question?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay.
It'll have to go to the county commission for a vote, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Now, the facade sign and landscape grant is still available. There is funds there. And ask for any business that wants to make enhancements to the facade of their building, their sign or landscape. There are some businesses down there that we've granted, that we've had grants approved for that haven't used them. One in particular, I know the building's now for sale. I'm assuming that grant goes with the land. I don't know if it does or not.
No, it wouldn't. They'd have to reapply. It was for a particular landscape. It was specific if they had a tenant that showed a lease. If they sell it, the new tenant would have to apply. It may not even be the same business.
All right. Thank you. The next item is a real simple one, is the census. Sebastian is still the highest in this area with their census response, but we still have 25% of our population who has not responded. For each of those people, it's $17,000 per year that the state does not get from the federal government, which in turn does not come to the city of Sebastian in the form of grants to do things like septic-to-sewer conversions. The million dollars that the city manager has gotten to hook up to run the sewer line to the airport, things like that, don't come to us. So those 25% of the people, we need to get them some way or another out there. So we're on a real push now. The federal government has extended the timeframe for the finalization of the census to October 1st because of COVID-19, so we have some time to do that. So that's my push on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask the city manager if there's any updates on testing for the virus up in the North County? Have they made any announcements?
So the North County testing is the fairgrounds. It's Monday and Wednesday, 8:30 to 10:30. And I am looking at saliva testing, but the problem is, we have to pay for it. We have to get, we have to find a lab to do the, so it's a little more challenged than just getting the test kit. So I'm talking to a company about that as well.
And I will say, the city manager and I were both tested on Wednesday of last week. No?
HIPAA.
HIPAA. Oh, I can't say that. Sorry. I can.
So, Mr. City Manager, that's Monday and Wednesday from 8:30 to 10:30?
Yes, at the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds.
Yes. Yes, they get it right off 58th Street.
Right off of 58th Street. Great. Thank you.
And get there early. I got there late, and I was, well, not really that late. I got there, they start at 8:30, and I got there at 7:30, and I was still two hours in line.
Well, you must have been negative. You're here, right?
No, I don't have the results yet.
Oh.
I can say that. Mine was with Quest, and Quest is apparently notoriously slow. Item A or C? Does anyone want to pull those? I'm sorry, sir.
On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Item C.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you can read everything on the consent agenda for the people at home, that would help.
Well, what's on the consent agenda right now is item A, which is Resolution Number R 20-11, abatement of a side yard easement at 825 Sebastian Boulevard. And the city recommends we abate that, so it's on the consent agenda. I have a motion on that.
I would check on that.
Move approval.
All right. Councilmember Hill, move approval, and Vice Mayor Malte second it. We can do that by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, same sign. That passes. Okay. I've asked to pull item B. Pretty simple reason. The city clerk mentioned that her finger went crazy, and on the agenda definition for item B, it says October 2nd, 2020, and in reality, it should say October 1st, 2020. It is correct in the resolution in the document, and it does say October 1st in the resolution, but because the agenda item said October 2nd, the city clerk asked that I pull it and correct that. I don't have any issues with that. It's what we were just presented, and I move approval on that.
Second.
Second.
All right. And that one, we can also do by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Vice Mayor Malte.
On item C, we're authorizing the purchase of a new vehicle for the Building Department. This is for a new employee.
It's for a building inspector, yes. It's one that's been budgeted. The building inspector has been budgeted, and we just haven't filled that position until recently.
So my question, is this individual still on probation?
I'm sorry?
Is the individual that was hired as a building inspector on probation?
Any new employees on probation.
Okay. How long of a period of time?
Three months.
For three months? And does he have all his state qualifications as a building inspector?
The employees we hire will have to have all of the inspections. Some of them, they can acquire when they're here. They can get, they have the basic requirements for the job, then they can get hired if they want to. If there's other certificates, they can get up to six months to get some of those other certifications.
I'd be a little bit concerned that we're buying new vehicles for new personnel that may be here and may not be here. My concern is, you know, we're looking at a lot of money being spent on equipment and vehicles since I've been on the council. We've roughly spent $787,000 on equipment and vehicles. Most of that was for the police department, which is a very good cause, but I'm just concerned with the financial status because of the COV. If we should be out buying a vehicle when we have enough vehicles that we might be able to recondition one during this period.
Well, this is out of the Building Enterprise Fund. I'm sorry?
Is the individual that was hired as a building inspector on probation?
Any new employees on probation.
Okay. For how, how long of a period of time?
Three months.
For three months? And does he have all his state qualifications as a building inspector?
The employees we hire will have to have all of the inspections. Some of the, some of them they can acquire when they're here. They can get, uh, they have the basic requirements for the job and they can get hired if they want, if there's other certificates. They can, they can get up to six months to get some of those other certi- certifications.
Well, I'd be a little bit concerned that we're buying new vehicles, uh, for new personnel that may be here and may not be here. My concern is, you know, we're looking at a lot of money being spent on equipment and, uh, vehicles, uh, since I've been on the council. We've roughly spent $787,000 on equipment and vehicles. Most of that, uh, was for the police department, which is a very good cause. But I'm just concerned with the financial status because of the COV. If we should be out buying a vehicle when we have enough vehicles that we might be able to recondition one during this period.
Well, this is out of the building enterprise fund. It's not out of the general fund or out of the, the tax. And there's, uh, there's significant reserves in there to cover the cost of this, this vehicle. It's, it comes out of the permit fees.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I tell you what my concern is on it. I, first of all, the fact that it's a Nissan and it's not American-made, I prefer to see American-made vehicles purchased for the city. Especially under these circumstances, uh, what's going on throughout the country. The second thing is, you know how I feel about these fleet contracts? I'm not a big fan of them. I'd like to see at least two to three bids on all, even if they're three fleet bids. So, and then the fact that Charles made a very good point that this gentleman is on probation. Not that I'm wishing anybody bad luck, but don't make it through probation. We'll have another vehicle sitting in the compound. But those are the two issues that I had. Um, I don't know if any of the other council members had an issue with the, the type of vehicle and the fleet management.
I, I, I'm not sure where Nissan, just second, Councilmember Hill, I'll get you. I'm not sure where the Nissan Frontier is made, but Nissan has like six plants in the United States. So I don't know where they make this particular vehicle. I guess we could find out, but.
I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah. So, uh, Councilmember Hill?
I, I would just state that the, the, the vehicle's being purchased for the position, not for the individual. Whether this individual makes it past their, his or her probation, it doesn't matter. The position is in the city. It's a budgeted position. Uh, so if this person makes it, great. That's awesome. And they have their vehicle. If they don't, then we hire someone else and they have to have this vehicle. So, uh, I think it doesn't really matter if the person's on probation.
Okay. So do I have a motion on this?
Yeah, I'd move to approve.
I'll second on that. I'll second it. Let's do a voice vote, please.
Vice Mayor Malti?
I'll go along with it. Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
I didn't hear Charles. What'd you say? I said yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Parris?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion, Chris. Thank you.
Okay. Now to committee reports and appointments. Uh, Brian, are you coming in through Zoom to do this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Uh, just want to give you an update. Since the last update, the city council on June 24th, staff and subcommittee members, along with scientific advisors, have reached a consensus on the IPM plan's pesticide methodology. This includes a list of approved chemicals which are compared and assessed based on a numerical model called the environmental impact quotient, or EIQ for short. The EIQ creates a score for chemicals based on a variety of human health and environmental risk factors. The EIQ is then formulated into a field use EIQ based on the application rate of the product and the, the area in which it is applied. At the IPM subcommittee meeting on Monday, July 20th, the committee unanimously approved the final integrated pest management plan for parks and properties. Uh, so just to confirm, the chemical portion, uh, the pesticide methodology I just mentioned, that's the last option within the integrated pest management plan. Uh, staff would like to thank Natural Resources Board, Natural Resource Board members Kathy Brothers, Brian O'Neill, Thomas Carano, and Jessica Lovell, as well as scientific advisors, Dr. Graham Cox, Christine Kelly Begazo, Sharon Tyson, and Ms. Ruth Callahan for their dedication and support in developing this plan. I would also like to recognize the city's environmental technician, Ms. Kim Hagler, for all the hard work, time, and effort she put into this plan. Kim spent many late nights and weekends putting together all of the input from the committee into the final plan. So the schedule going forward, um, we're planning this coming Monday, July 27th, to present the plan to Parks and Recreation Board. The plan will then be brought to the Natural Resources Board on August 4th. And after review and approval from those boards, the final presentation of the integrated pest management plan for parks and properties will be given to the city council with an accompanying resolution at the August 26th city council meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor Dodd?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just, just a brief statement. You know, I, I really appreciate Brian, the hard work that you and the committee have been putting together on this issue. Uh, it's incredibly, it's incredibly important. So thank you very much for the work. I look forward to seeing this and look forward to getting, uh, everything back to normal in Sebastian where we can get these parks taken care of. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Malti, did you?
Brian, I'll second what, uh, Mr. Hill said. You did a great job and thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to cha- cha- thank Brian and the committee for not, uh, killing us with more poisons. Thank you very much, Brian.
All right. Thank you. It's, uh, it's a good day when we get through this process, believe me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do have one board member from the committee that would like to speak on Zoom.
Okay, bring him forward. Yes.
Graham, you?
Does that work?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I, I just want to support what, uh, what Brian has said. It's been a pleasure to work with Brian and with him. And I want you to understand that we have built into this plan regular review of what the processes are, what the products are, and what has to be done next. And it's been, uh, good to get this far with this particular plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else?
Do we have a replacement for Kim? Kim's leaving the Natural Resource Board. I was wondering how the replacement is done.
That'll come through the normal process. Yeah. That'll get advertised in the newspaper and then they'll bring applicants to us. Okay. Now we're on to, there's no public input, no public hearings, no unfinished business. Now we're on to public input. There is public input. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the council, uh, you can come forward at this time. Ask you to line up on the, on the Xs in the floor. I want to remind everyone that we're going to keep it civil and direct and to the point and direct your comments to me.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Nunn. I'm in Sebastian, Florida. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I want to state the public input is a citizen's opportunity to address all council members face to face on the record so that you may impress upon them how you feel on certain general issues. The council members are elected by the citizens and serve at the pleasure of the citizens. A council member's job is to listen and follow the directions of its citizens and its amazing professional staff. The job of the council member is not personal grievances, vendettas, or pet projects. It is their job to approve or disapprove the recommendations of the staff. The job is also to create laws and ordinances as suggested by the staff and approve variances in those ordinances as recommended or turned down by the staff. Council members are not the law, but the approvers of laws. The most important job of a council member is to truly listen to all of their constituents and city staff. Their success is built on their ability to research agenda items before meetings and act like adults and have discussions legally in chambers on all of the matters before council. By the way, Nissan Frontiers are built in Duster, Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, you can come forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gil Gordian, 10-year resident of Sebastian. Uh, I was also a six-year member of the Natural Resources Board. I just wanted to see what channels I could possibly take. And the city of Sebastian, we now have about 20,000-plus residents in our town. The marinas are quite numerous with a four-mile span of waterway. My request is, is that what channels could we possibly take in order to have a fire vessel?
Well, um.
A fire boat?
Well, the fire department is the county.
Right.
And the ci- the city of Sebastian doesn't have a fire department. Could you not flip that light, please? Your, your flashlight that's flipping.
I'm sorry.
Okay. The, the, the fire department is a county entity. The city does not have a fire department.
So I should direct the letter to?
So you have to go to the county to talk. And I, I, I don't know if they have a fire boat or not, but it's, uh.
Well, we don't.
They do?
No, we don't. Indian River County has a small one down in Bureau.
Okay. Well, the Indian River County does have that. But that's where, they, they manage and operate the fire department for the city of Sebastian. So you'd have to go to the county, uh, in order to deal with that issue.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, my second issue is what channels, perhaps with, uh, Dr. Graham Cox? We know that the St. Sebastian River has two prongs. When rainwater starts to fill in on the north prong, it gets released into the river. I'm not sure how that can affect property value, fishing, and everything else. If you happen to have been out at the inlet on an outgoing tide when they let out the spillway, that creates quite a bit of funkiness in layman's terms. What I'd like to see, there is state land between the power lines to the North Fork and the, the South Fork. There's state land there. I wonder what we can do in order to do a by-county cooperative to build some sort of tubing and let the scientists do their work to see if they can build a small structure in order to cleanse that water or a little bit that comes out.
I, I, I don't think there's anything that Sebastian can do. I've actu- I've, I've seen a couple of articles about, uh, the problems with that drains coming through. There's, there actually are tubes in those, in, in there and the, the, there's, people are not happy with the way that they discharge the water through there. So. But I don't know. Uh, city manager, that might be someone that you'd have to go to the state, uh, Environmental Protection or St. John's Water Management, maybe, to deal with that.
The steps would have to probably go to St. John's.
There's nothing that we could do with that, I don't believe. As you think.
Well, it'd be a water management district concern in the St., in the Sebastian inlet, Sebastian River Improvement District controls a lot of those structures to dump out on that, that prong. So I know that there is a project that, um, Greg's Brothers is working on to do water storage on the property on the north prong of that river, which may help that. And that's one of the projects that they're working on. So there's some, there is some plans to help with that a little bit. And that should have some.
Yeah. So it'd be St. John's Water Management or the Sebastian River Improvement District if you'd have to go to to talk about that.
Okay. Thank you very much, council.
Sure thing. Next person.
Good evening. Michelle Morris, Sebastian. Um, I'd like to say how proud I am of our community, uh, for coming together to ensure that Sebastian's voice is heard. There are several positive things that have occurred in light of the negativity some of our council members have brought. People are more empowered to have a voice. People have become involved in our government and are watching their actions. People have banded together to help put our city back to work. Our community has worked diligently to right a wrong. The public has become aware and is watching each and every one of you on a daily basis to ensure that you are representing our community as a whole and not just a select few. And lastly, I'd just like to say, um, we, the public, will see you all at the polls and thank you.
Next person.
Ben Hawker, city of Sebastian. I'd like to compliment our city manager for the progress that he's making at the park, which is at the Yacht Club where the handicap ramp is being put in. And that is a compliment. But prior to that, I had asked, if we're doing it at the Yacht Club, since we're paying the architect to do all the groundwork and the permitting, why did we not include Main Street, which has the same situation? Are we doing Main Street or not? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to do that?
I have two hands raised.
Okay, bring them in.
Andrea?
Hi, Andrea Clowey, 501 Palm Avenue, Sebastian. Um, my concern this evening is an open letter to the citizens of Sebastian that I'm looking at from Councilmember Malti. And in this letter, council mem- there's no date on it, but it was just recently. Uh, Councilmember Malti expresses concerns on July 13th, 2020, the Sebastian City Council, uh, was to convene, uh, convene an executive session. On the morning of July 14th, Councilmember Malti states, quote, "I received three calls referencing the city council's executive session's decision. I contacted the city manager in person to express my anger and disgust with this information being made public prior to the city attorney's approval to do so." Um, I, I personally want to applaud Councilmember Malti's, um, opinion on this and his bringing it to our attention. However, my concern is, okay, who are these three people that contacted Councilmember Malti? And, uh, the other thing is, um, the very next sentence after he states that he brought it to the city manager's attention is, quote, "The city council's decision at the first executive session meeting, July 13th, was not to appeal the judge's decision..." Dot, dot, dot. "To let her decision stand." Period. End quote. Now, here's my concern. Councilmember Malti just released what he said he was appalled at three other people releasing. So, Mr. Mayor, um, something is leaking terribly in the plumbing system at City Hall. Cause you have, uh, three callers apparently, according to Councilmember Malti. And I, I would like to know who they were, if, if he would be, uh, kind enough to tell us, uh, since he put it in writing that this happened. And I would also like to know if, uh, if it's acceptable for council members to be discussing executive session material. Litigation is still pending. So that's all I have for now. Uh, I'm just as appalled as Councilmember Malti, that he would leak. And I'm curious to know where the other leaks came from. Thank you.
Thank you. An extra Zoom person?
Mr. McPartland?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can.
I have a couple of questions. First, I hear from a certain council member that their attorney has advised them on several matters concerning how this city council operates. I believe the city has excellent representatives. What is the reason behind going to your own council? I would like to know who the attorney is and what is their written opinion? If the council member discussed the annexation with them, isn't that against the court order? What is the reason for this? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom?
No, sir.
No, sir. Anyone else inside that wants to address the council? All right. Thank you. We're on the new business. Item number A. Item number A, uh, that is to finalize the citywide design for the city's master sign project by West Central Signs, Inc. If anybody here noticed that trailer in the parking lot with that big sign on it, that's, uh, an example of, I'm sorry? I, I can't hear what you're saying. Is your mic on?
What, what, you talking about that big thing in the?
The big thing over here. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you notice that, that's an example of what the signs will look like. That's actually the sign for the pickleball court. Uh, in the agenda packet is, uh, an additional layout of that sign, but there's actually a real life example of it in the parking lot. Uh, I believe our city clerk was gracious enough to let us all know. I think she probably called most of us or all of us today and told us that was there. So, uh, I'll open this up, uh, to Brian for discussion, or to city manager first.
Yeah, Brian's here to talk about it. And I believe the representative from Citywide is here as well to talk about it and answer any questions you have. The biggest reason we brought it to you was in the original design that you approved was gray posts, but that just looked like an aluminum post on that sign. Citywide did a great job, I think, of modernizing it and giving it some, some features that when you get up to it, you can actually see the, the faux wood grain. But I'll turn it over to Brian for his presentation and.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, we, the, the council selected and, and staff selected SignStar on December 11th, 2019 to, uh, continue the, uh, city's signage master plan. With that, we started working with them on the designs. And as Mr. Carlisle stated, originally, city council, I believe it was in June of 2019, had suggested that we go with gray poles inside of the CRA, black poles, um, throughout the rest of the city. However, when we were working with SignStar on the design and, um, also whenever we had other companies in the bid process present those colors, it just didn't work with the wood theme that we were trying to, to get on the poles. So they presented us a brown wooden option and, uh, that's the option that we have presented today. And we just wanted to bring it back to council for your review and input, um, since we did change the color of the poles. And we do have Mr. Danny Powell, who's the vice president of SignStar. He is in attendance. If you all have any questions for him as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's me?
Yes, that, yeah, that's you.
Thank you very much. I, I, I saw the signs and I saw the sign and it's beautiful. It looks great. I look forward to seeing these, uh, throughout the city, having some uniformity. Uh, it's beautiful. Brian, again, thank you so much for the hard work that you've done on this. Uh, I agree with you. The, the, the posts are, are fantastic, the way they look.
I agree with you, the posts are fantastic, the way they look, and I look forward to seeing this process move forward. You know, this has been going on for quite some time now, so this is really beautiful, and I look forward to seeing it happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Brian, your staff, good job. Just a few questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the warranty on those signs?
Mr. Powell, can you address the warranty? I know we required a one-year warranty, and then some of the manufacturer components of the signs have additional warranties as well. If you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, the signs themselves carry a one-year warranty, that's all parts and labor. Each component of the sign has varying warranties from the manufacturer, like the paint and the different backgrounds and the metals and different things. So the expected life of the sign will be somewhere between five and 10 years, but that's where it's at.
And my next question is, when you put these signs up, would they withstand hurricane winds? How would you handle that?
Yes, sir. All the signs that are installed will be permitted and engineered by a Florida Sealed Engineer. And obviously, for Florida, it's going to withstand hurricane-strength winds.
So, Brian, will see that they meet the criteria of engineering?
Yes, sir. We will have to get permits through our building department, and part of that is they do have to submit engineered drawings that are certified by an engineer within the state of Florida. And our building department will have to do inspections on the footer and ensure that everything is correct prior to the installation.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I heard you right. You said these signs are good for five to 10 years?
Yeah, that's the expected life for these type of signs.
What are we doing with the old signs?
The old signs will be disposed of.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Maybe to staff? Maybe you can retain those and auction them off to the people in the community. Some people in the town may want them for souvenirs. It's just a suggestion, instead of just trashing them. Maybe there can be a consensus on that from the board.
Mr. Carlisle.
So you'd have to go out to bid, or we could put them on GovDeals.com, and people could bid on it that way.
There you go.
The thing is, is who's going to store it? Where are we going to store all these signs? Part of their contract is to disassemble them, remove them, and get them out. It's through actually the council, whichever way you would like to go.
I like the get them out option. I don't know what anyone else might think.
If I may point out, the signs are, the way they're constructed, they won't really come apart easily, so I'm afraid they're going to be damaged in the removal process. I don't know there's going to be much to salvage there. There may be one or two that may have a face that could be salvaged, but a lot of them, I'm afraid, may come apart in pieces.
How many signs are there?
I don't know the exact quantity offhand.
So our current numbers to replace are 30 signs.
30 signs. Government deals with the online, and then maybe can get a jump on it before they start installing them, and they can bid on them and leave them at the airport. We've got plenty of space at the airport. I had a few people call me and inquire about them, and that's why I'm bringing it up to the council's attention.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to dedicate staff to start to tear down these signs when it's part of their contract.
Yeah, we can have a consensus vote. I'm not in favor of doing that. I like to go through the process of just getting rid of them. Councilmember Hill?
Mayor Dodd, I trust very much our staff to deal with this the most efficient way possible.
Okay. Vice Mayor Maudy?
I think we can just get rid of them.
All right.
I need to hear what he said. What did he say?
He said, "Get rid of them."
Okay.
It's contracted, so yes.
Okay, so the consensus is that we go with the contract.
Maybe you can give your address for the record, and somebody can contact you. How's that?
Yeah, you talking about my business address?
No, yeah, your business address, absolutely.
Yes, it's SignStar, West Central Signs, 3502 Queen Palm Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33619.
And what was your name?
Danny Powell.
Danny Powell. Thank you very much, Danny. Thank you for answering my questions, too.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? And I would like a motion, please. I think this is an action item, is it not?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I need a motion on this, please.
I'd love to change, move approval.
All right, second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, the motion by Councilmember Hill is to move approval, seconded by Vice Mayor Maudy.
Mr. Mayor, before you have the vote, just for the record, can you just read it to the record how much these signs are costing us, so people at home understand it?
The total cost of this sign project is $262,010. That's a three-year commitment. That's the total cost.
$262,000, right? Okay.
That's what it says down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, since this is financial, let's have a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Maudy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on... Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to item number B, which is the approval of proposed millage rate of 3.1514 for 2020 and '21. Direct to city manager to execute and transmit the requested forms. Just so everybody understands what we're talking about before we get started on this is that at this time each year, we have to provide the property praiser, tax collector information about what the maximum amount of our millage rate might be for 2020 and '21, or for the next physical year, so that they can produce trim notices. And it has been the practice in the past years for the council to adopt a rate for this purpose that is higher than what we anticipate our budget rate will be, because we can't go backwards from this. And if something catastrophic happens over the next three months, especially with COVID-19 and all that kind of stuff, it's a gigantic leap for us to actually go back, to increase the number we provide tonight for them to use. So Mr. Kilgore has... I'm going to let the city manager, if you want to introduce Mr. Kilgore in the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kilgore is here. Him and I have been working diligently on this budget, but I got to tell you, he's a superstar when it comes to putting these things together. And he has a brief presentation to give you to kind of explain how we got to where we were and the challenges that we're facing with this budget. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Kilgore.
Good evening, good to see you all. The process is outlined in the state statutes, and we have a timeline that we have to follow to submit the proposed millage rate to the county. And then they put it on the trim notices that goes out to the public sometime in August. So I've included the forms in the agenda packet that we have to submit, just for your general information. And then, as you mentioned, I have a PowerPoint. It is important that we decide on the proposed millage tonight to meet the timeline. I will preface this by saying the proposed, or the draft budget we have at this point is based on the current millage rate of 2.9399. We are recommending we go back to the millage rate the previous year, which was 3.1514. We attempted to balance the budget, actually starting out with the rollback rate, saw that wasn't doable, so we did try to balance the budget based on the 2.9399. So I'm just going to briefly go through this. I do have some slides on the other funds, aside from the general fund that's most affected by the proposed millage. But I'm going to kind of skip through those very quickly, because we will have a meeting on August 26 and have the entire budget package for your consideration prior to the public hearings that we'll have in September. So the general fund budget does not have any changes to staff, no full-time additions, no full-time deletions. We did take out a couple of part-timers in the leisure services department, and that was basically a trade-off with maintaining an open position that we had for a maintenance service worker. So we did fill the maintenance service worker, but we offset that with other changes. We have reduced the budget again at the 2.9399 millage rate. We've reduced it from the current budget by $302,000 to make those items that we thought were absolutely necessary included in the document. Well, backing up a bit, you see, even on personnel costs, we had a reduction of $11,000. We cut operating expenses and capital spending fairly heavily. The $11,000 cut out of the personnel budget is, as you saw in the presentation earlier this evening, the group insurance savings there with those premiums down. We have nothing planned for any kind of across-the-board increases that we might be negotiating with the labor unions. So we do have concerns about that going into those negotiations with nothing set aside. Normally, we will set aside a number that we have to work with based on their arguments. My big concern with the budget is that the revenue estimates are substantially down, particularly with the state revenues because of the COVID. I've tried to estimate the best I can on the current year and then looked at next year as being a four-and-a-half percent increase for the state revenues, as well, and same theory on franchise fees and utility taxes. At the time I originally put those estimates together, I was kind of hoping that by October we'd be back to some kind of normalcy and businesses would be back to a growth mode, but that remains to be seen. So I do have concerns that even though four-and-a-half percent is not unreasonable for those categories of revenues, but in this coming year, I'm just not that certain. We are expecting some funds reimbursed from the county, well, through the CARES Act and the county coming to us for the COVID-19, $50,000 or $60,000 perhaps. The important thing to remember with our revenue picture is that property taxes, franchise fees, utility taxes, and state revenue shareings make up 80% of our general fund budget. So when those categories drop off, there's just nothing you can do to make up for it in the other categories. Like I mentioned, I'm not going to dwell on the other fund. I just wanted to, I have slides indicating each one. You know, the total budget does include the golf course, the airport, the building fund. Those are all enterprise funds, and the thought is that their fees or their revenues would cover their cost of operating. We have a number of special revenue funds, and the key here is that these revenue funds are restricted on how they can be used. For instance, on the local option gas tax, it could only be used for road programs. It could be operating our capital. We've allocated the monies this year in order to cover $400,000 of road resurfacing. Discretionary sales taxes, although they are dropping off, we still have programmed $500,000 for major reconstruction road work. So it's a total of $900,000 that would be allocated for next year's resurfacing and road improvements. Here again, keep in mind, this has no impact on general fund, although these funds do allow us, in some cases, to fund something out of the special revenue funds that couldn't be afforded out of the general fund. As you know, we have the Riverfront CRA Fund. Those values in that area, this, over the past year, have did increase 4%, so it's going in the right direction for the, you know, the idea of a CRA fund is that you would improve the values in those areas, and that's happening. Recreation impact fee funds, we used to worry about spending those funds. They have to be spent within seven years of collection. That's no longer a problem. We've been going through some, a lot of activity in recreation and the use of those impact fees, so there's no concerns whatsoever there. Stormwater utility fund, we are balancing that budget, the personnel and operating costs for the program. We are funding next year $200,000 towards the stormwater master plan. Do you get that updated, so we can proceed with some other stormwater projects? The couple minor funds, the law enforcement forfeiture funds, those are restricted, of course, for obviously law enforcement, and there's a balance of about $30,000, but we must spend those during the year for things that are not included in the current budget, so we don't even try to project what may be, they may be used for. Every dollar spent out of there has to come back to the council individually before it is paid. Parking and luau fund, that you're probably aware that we had that program that went in about four years ago, and there is a small, relatively small balance there of $57,000. We have the cemetery trust fund. Half those sales can be, are set aside for future expansions of the cemetery. The other half is used for, or can be used for regular operation and maintenance. Since our budgets are funded, or the cemetery division is a part of general fund, we are offsetting some of the cost to general fund with a transfer from the cemetery trust fund. We're recommending $85,000, which is still short of what that operation does cost us. We have one debt service fund, and that is the old stormwater banknotes that we issued primarily for the canal work, and those will be maturing in May of 2022. Capital improvement program, you know, one thing economically wise to be doing in these times is to get projects out there that cause hiring and fuels the economy. So we are including $27 million in the capital program over the next six years, as opposed to last year's six-year forecast was only $23 million. So I mentioned some of the largest items is the street paving and reconstruction work for $900,000, the stormwater master plan. We've allocated $500,000 for canal restoration, whatever form that may take. And we're matching federal and state monies for the new taxiway at the airport and to expand the sewer services on the west side of the airport. So getting back to the actual millage rate and why we are making the recommendation of the 3.1514. The rollback rate is actually calculated at 2.8091. So if we go, the way we've got the budget balanced now, it would be 2.9399, the same millage as this year, and that would be a 4.66% increase that's advertised on the The property values did increase at a good pace, 7.18% over last year's total tax roll, or total taxable values. A lot of that was reassessments, and that's 4.74% of the portion of the 7.18. If we did go with the proposed millage rate of 3.1514, that would add an additional $300,000 to the budget as we drafted now, drafted at this point for general fund. To give you some idea about the additions this year, they were not the highest ever, but higher since 2015. but higher since 2015, or not quite as high as they were in 2017. But that, those additions do help us, but when you get right down to it, people think the additions are going to pay for the additional cost of the services. And that, this year, even at the higher rate, it was only $95,000. It was new money for us to allocate over what we had last year. I provided this sheet last several years to kind of indicate what it does to the individual taxpayer. I show the three levels of assessment, just as a ballparking it, but if you look at the middle part of the chart, an assessed value of $250,000 for a homestead property, their bill at the, going by to the 3.1514 would be a $50 total increase over the current year that they're paying. Not so true with the commercial or non-homesteaded properties. They would have a $132 increase. Based on, there again, on what was, would have been an assessed value of $250,000 last year, and assuming they increase by the maximum, which is 10%, that the property praiser can adjust their values. With homesteaded properties, the property praiser can use the lower 3% or the per capita change in population, which is 1 point, this year is 1.0322, I believe it was. This is a chart showing the history of setting the millage rate. The big takeaway from this here, I think, is that the final rate that we've adopted over the years, for the most part, has been above rollback, but yet less than, lesser equal to what the, what the final rate was set at. So generally, we set the higher rate, as we've said, and we come back down to something less than that before we adopt the final millage. If you notice, we've only, or we've had quite a history of lowering the millage rate. I think there was one other year on the chart that is almost what we're talking about with a 2.93. The rest of them have been higher. So the big considerations that we have going forward and what we're concerned with as far as setting a rate that would be too low is that we get yet to negotiate the labor contracts. We've already got hurricane season started, and with hurricanes, we get reimbursements, but it can take years. We're still waiting for some portion of the money that we spent on Hurricane Matthew. As I mentioned, we're concerned about the revenue estimates maybe being on the high side, the fact that we have no increases for any kind of cross-the-board increases for, to discuss in negotiations. We're cutting operating accounts and funding items to the extent that we think going any further with the cuts would actually be an impact on the level of services. Just to kind of summarize, the rollback millage at 2.8091 would be advertised as a no-tax increase. The 2.9399 that we've got the draft budget set at would be a 4.66% actually increase. But if you went with the proposed rate of 3.1514, that will be advertised as a 12.2% increase over rollback. Give you an idea on pay increases and just various levels there of what in dollars that would be equivalent to, and there again, we don't have anything allowed. There's always the possibility of saying that, well, we'll just, rather than have it funded with current revenues, we'll go to reserves. It's not recommended. That's a trap you get into if you start relying on reserves to pay your own ongoing costs. So not something we want to see. There again, budget's balanced at 2.9399. We're not suggesting using reserves. And there are no provisions in the current budget for labor negotiations or any possible legal actions or additional reductions in our revenues we can realistically expect. So to sum up, what we staff is recommending, 3.1514 be set as the proposed rate. And between now and the hearings in September, we hope for better news on the revenue side. We hope that by then we'll have the labor negotiations, feedback from that. But for now, that's the status of the budget and what our recommendation is. I don't know, Paul, had anything you wanted to summarize or add?
Yeah, just one other thing to take into consideration when you set this trim notice. That's not the final tax notice, as you may or may not be aware. The one thing that's uncertain is the state doesn't set the revenue share for the next year until August. So if we set it too low, they set a low revenue share for us, that could affect that final outcome of the budget. We can true everything up in September, but we really need to have some cover there for not knowing what the state revenue is going to set in August. Just keep that in mind.
Right.
As you take this under consideration.
Okay. I think that one of the important things is that the budget is, the budget itself right now, the proposed budget that the budget committee looked at the other night, and I believe that they didn't make very many changes to it, and you guys don't look like you're going to make a lot, but is at 2.9399, which is actually the same millage rate that we used last year. The reason that's going to be advertised as a 4.7% increase is because property values went up, not because we're increasing, I mean, it's a misnomer to think that we're increasing taxes. We're not. We're keeping our tax levy the same, but property values went up, therefore, an individual will pay roughly 4.7% more in their taxes, and it's not because we're doing that. I think you did a Herculean job putting that budget together as I look through it. And I do believe that there's going to be some changes as they, as they talk about what's going to happen to discretionary sales tax and what's going to happen to local option gas tax. I mean, I believe your number on discretionary sales tax was, the one month we've looked at that was a pretty dramatic decrease.
Yes, comparing the same month last year as this year on the collections from discretionary sales tax, it was down 37%.
Right.
And thank you for mentioning the budget committee. They did vote six to zero. All the members that were there were unanimous.
So I know that the things that we use discretionary sales tax for and local option gas tax, it is, it's, we have some leeway on not doing some of that stuff, some things that that money covers for, so it does give us some options. But I think they've done a great job putting this together, and I personally believe that that extra $300,000 that we would get by setting a trim notice at 3.1514 is to our advantage because we'll know a lot more between now and September, and that 300,000 might save our gazoo's when it comes time to redo the budget after the public hearings in September, especially when we'll know what's coming from the state on that. So anyone else have any comments or questions?
Mayor Dodd?
Yes, sir. That's you, Captain Hill.
Sir?
Yes, Captain Hill, you're on.
All right, thank you very much. First, I want to say thank you, Ken. You did a heck of a job, as always. I think that one slide that you showed on there where it shows what the council finishes with versus what we do at this time is, you know, is always lower, that's probably there for me because, you know, I'm always that guy that's like rollback guy, rollback guy, rollback guy, and I never even want to go to an increase in the millage rate, you know, but we are in some strange times right now, and, you know, I really appreciate all of the work that you and the budget review committee have done on this. This is a heck of a budget, like Mayor Dodd said. But there are a couple of things of concern for me, and that's why I think we need to go with the trim notice that we're going with. First of all, the zero in there for our employees, that's difficult pill to swallow. I'm not going to go out and say, you know, I'm full raises or not for increases, but I can assure you that our employees, you know, are the lifeblood of this community. So there needs, we need to have some sort of a cushion in there for that. And then, of course, there's this pending litigation that we're looking at. I mean, we have, we have got lawsuit after lawsuit just pouring down on us right now, and we have no idea what the cost is going to be on that. So we need to make sure that we have some sort of coverage going forward. I am not the guy that says, let's raise taxes, and we're not doing that right now. We're just setting a trim notice that states basically, this is the highest we can go. But we are in extraordinary times, so I think that we should do this at this time, we should favor this at this time, because we have those unknowns that we're facing, and as we go forward, we can see if those things happen. I am the let's cut taxes, I am the let's go back to rollback rate guy, as you know, Ken, but I will tell you this today, that I think you've done a heck of a job putting this budget together, and we don't know what we face in the coming months. So we must protect ourselves and make sure that we have enough money to not only maintain the level of service that the community requires of us, but also to deal with this pending litigation from the, well, I'm not going to get too, from the behavior that's taken place over the last several months. We may be in big trouble here, so I'm going to go forward, and I'm going to agree with this because, you know, we have to have a cushion. We have to have something there to protect us. So great job. I'm in favor of the budget as presented, but we need this extra cushion, and that's all I have, Mayor Dodd. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments? Vice Mayor Malte?
No, I'm all for approving the budget.
Okay. Councilman Parrish? Councilmember Gilliam?
Yeah, I have a, I have a few questions, Mr. Mayor. But Ken, first of all, with the property values going up, it's a windfall, a lot of money coming in, right? We've got new construction going on. Can you tell me how much we haven't improved?
Well, according to the slides, Ms. Gilliams indicated that the new construction money added about $93,000.
Mm-hmm.
$93,000 on our size budget does not go very far.
Right. We have how much in reserve?
Well, based on my projections with the reduction in the state revenues, I think our reserves are probably going to drop down to 4.8 million. We usually try to keep 5 million in reserves because of, you know, the danger of hurricanes or unexpected events.
You said that we didn't collect on Matthews, the hurricane?
Right. There's about $140,000 of the, I think there's about $3.5 million total that we build on Matthew to FEMA, and they are still dragging their feet. I was in touch with them just way before last. One of their auditors doing, trying to do a final audit of it, and I reminded them that we still feel like they owe us that money, but...
On the average, on these hurricanes that we pay out with the cleanups and everything, on the average, what do we put out of the reserve?
Well, Matthew is the largest.
How much was that?
That was probably about $3.5 million.
$3.5 million. So we got close to 5 million, and that was the largest one at 3. How about the other ones?
Well, Dorian, I think, was about $250,000, and Irma was probably about half a million.
Mm-hmm, okay. And...
Always the fear that I have is that, you know, at least those happened, not in the same year. They fell back-to-back.
Right.
But my concern when I reviewed what our $5 million would actually cover us for, if we had a major instance where, you know, not necessarily a Hurricane Andrew, but something that was really severe, and say it took out 30% of the properties in town.
We have insurance, don't we?
We don't, we have insurance on our facilities.
Yes.
But as far as what I'm talking about is if it took out 30% of all your commercial and residential properties, where they go off the tax roll, then we'd have a severe, because that didn't happen, it didn't come back overnight.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd have several years there where our property tax roll would be reduced. And I figure the worst-case scenario, if you had two events that totaled 30%, you would be happy you had the...
The 300,000?
Well, the 500,000, or 5 million, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the increase in the 3.14 is an extra 300,000, right? If you went with the higher millage rate of 3...
It was different than the 3.1514.
Yeah.
To give us some flexibility just to cover our operating budget for this coming year.
But in reality, you're really shooting for the 2.9, aren't you? In reality, you want the extra fluff in there between now and...
There is no fluff.
Let me finish. We have to advertise that. I understand that.
Well, the 2.9, there is no fluff. We're saying that's a bare-bones budget, no increases for employees, no monies for revenue shortfalls.
Yeah.
We would end up having to eat into the reserve balances.
And at the 3.14 millage rate, that's like a 12% tax increase, is it not?
It's a 12% increase over rollback.
Yeah, mm-hmm, 12%. How do you think the taxpayers of the community feel when a lot of them are losing their jobs? Some of them are going to be losing their homes. Some of them are going to be evicted. That hasn't started yet, but that's right around the corner. How do you think they feel about paying 12% an increase in taxes on the assessment? Have you thought about it that way?
I'm a practical guy. My concern is where the city stands and whether we can afford to operate the current city services that we have.
Mayor Dodd, Mayor Dodd, point of order.
Excuse me. Yeah, he's got a point of order I have to deal with, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, point of order, go ahead, sir.
Mayor Dodd, the budget isn't up to Mr. Kilgore. He's providing the numbers there that we've asked him to provide us for the level of service required by the citizens of this community. He is just doing his job. It's not for him to think, well, what do you think about what the taxpayer is going to think? It's your job, Damian. So the fact is, don't ask, don't ask Mr. Kilgore the question of whether or not he thinks we should pay these taxes. It's your job, sir.
Okay, so you're, all right. I'm going to summarize this point of order as we'd like for you to kind of tame down the way you're talking to the CFO.
No, no, I want to try...
And I'll rule in his favor on that.
I want to try to justify raising our taxes 12% when we can shoot for the 2.9 and be more realistic at the 4%, especially when we're spending $500,000 for a set of blueprints and engineering plans for the new, for the new garage over at the airport.
Can I ask you...
When I see that kind of spending and then the bartering of sugar sand at the thing, I see a lot of money going out the back. I see a lot of money floating around here. So I just want to tell you how I feel, okay? In reference to this budget, I want the council members to understand...
Let me interrupt you for one second, please. I just want to interrupt you for one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're going to, we're going to talk about the budget on the 26th of August.
I understand that.
And at that time, you can talk about all this budget stuff, and you can talk about what you want to talk about right now, but it's not being productive.
I'm trying to convince two other members up here that we need to be at the 2.9 and not at the 3.14. I think that there's enough money...
How about if I help you with that? I'm going to make a motion that we set the trim budget rate at 3.14.
So you're going to deny me my chance to speak again?
Well, I'm going to give you a chance to speak on the motion. You said you're trying to convince two other people, so let me do this. I'm going to make a motion that we set the trim rate at the, at the requested rate of, let me get it right in here, find my book here.
3.14.
3.1514. That's my motion, it's on the floor.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Now, let's discuss the motion. So now you can discuss the motion. And the motion is setting the trim rate at 3.1514.
So franchise fees went up, correct?
Franchise fees, my best guess that this year is going to be about level with last year.
When I say franchise fees, what am I referring to?
Mostly it's the electric franchise, Florida Power and Light.
So we have all this new construction, right? FPNL, cable, those are all franchises, right?
Cable, no.
No?
But electric, water, and solid...
So when you have more construction, you should have more franchise fees, right? I would think so. I mean, that's how the franchise fees come in, based on the number of units you're building, right? I understand the state revenues are going to drop, the, you know, the gas tax, I can relate... I can relate to that because most people are not on the roads, they're staying home, and there's going to be less, uh, uh, fuel, fuel money coming in, um...
The fuel money is local option gas taxes. It doesn't help you out with the general fund.
Mm-hmm. Um, on the enterprise funds, like at the airport, you, you mentioned the DST funds for matching requirements. Are those funds going towards the major project?
Same.
They are, the five million, eight million dollar garage, the DST funds?
The DST funds are funding the, uh, the new public works facility.
The new public works, mm-hmm, okay. And you think that, that, uh, let's see here, the building department, um, over the years, back when we were hurting for money, the occupational license money went to the building department. You remember that, right?
I do.
Yeah. And it'd be a good time to get some of that occupational money back from the building department. I see that...
Actually, sir, we did get that back. It was paid back once things improved. We started making, we paid it over...
To the general fund, you said?
About three years, paying it back to general fund.
Correct. And that occupational money could be used now for those businesses that are hurting. Wouldn't that be a good, good way to spend some of that money? For the small businesses that pay into that occupational license account?
The li, occupational license money comes into general fund now as a, a revenue, and that's in these numbers that I presented.
Mm-hmm, okay. I, I know there's nine-hundred thousands of care money coming in through the county, right, for small businesses. I am, we'll talk about that later. Did you calculate that into your budget?
No, sir, because it's restricted to programs that are eligible under the CARES Act. And that doesn't include replacing your current revenues, and it doesn't include paying for employees that aren't doing, uh, COVID-related activities.
On the, uh, the CRA, uh, account, I see that, uh, expecting new sewer connection grants, uh, and I also know that we're, you're running a million dollars worth of sewer lines over at the airport, right? The county who handles utilities for the, the county, don't they have forty million dollars in reserves set aside for improving their franchise?
I'm not aware of what they have or don't have.
You don't, you're not aware they have forty million dollars in, in escrow that they've accumulated?
I'm not their CFO, sir.
Uh-huh, okay. Well, we may want to, instead of us laying out those, those funds to improve our infrastructure for utilities, for sewer lines at the airport, I think that it should fall on the county. It's, it's their business. They have the franchise. Uh, they tried to pull that on us many years ago on the extension on US-1, and I made that an issue. So, just a few other things, Mr. Uh, Ken. Um, the stormwater utility fund. Now, I know that, uh, I see you got a hundred thousand dollars allocated for roadway, swales, and COVID's work. And I'm sure the city manager's got that all picked out, where that's going, Mr. City Manager?
Those are all, and go in conjunction with the road resurfacing program.
Two-hundred thousand dollars allocated for developing and updating stormwater master plan. How old is the old master plan?
The old master plan is not a, a master plan. It's a model on how to, a stormwater master plan works. It, this, what we want is a comprehensive stormwater master plan, so that we can go after federal funds to offset some of the expenses that we have. And if we don't have a good master plan, it doesn't allocate, uh, drainage basins and how water should or shouldn't go, which the, the former master plans never did. It just said, if you have a swell clog, you unclog it, basically. If you have a trouble, you replace it. I want a master plan that shows, designates water basins, segregates them where the water should go, and then you look upstream and downstream and see the effects. And then you can come up with a comprehensive plan on how to solve some of these drainage issues.
So, the, uh, the two-hundred thousand dollars for that master plan is going to, how long is that going to last us for?
That's only a, the seed money for the grant that we're going after, that, uh, Ken Kilgore's working with Indian River, River Lagoon Council. And they've got a grant writer that's going to help us write a grant to offset some of those additional costs in the tune of about eight-hundred thousand dollars.
So, the master plan's going to be good for five years, ten years, fifteen?
It's a, it's going to be a growing document, because as you, as you develop it and as things change, it'll be a growing document.
And you expect that to go up to how much?
We're, we're asking for another eight-hundred thousand dollars in a grant.
St. John's?
It's, uh, well, we'll write it through St. John's and through DEP.
Okay, um, Mr. Ken, on the, the money that we bartered, how do we write that off down there at the cemetery? I'm looking at your, your review, your trust account, cemetery trust fund. And we bartered two-hundred, hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars in city assets. How do we write that off?
Point of order, Mayor Dodd.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilliams knows this is a question that he, that is ludicrous. There's, there's not been two-hundred, three-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars worth of sugar sand bartered for anything.
I said a hundred to two-hundred, Jim.
The city of Sebastian, I'm speaking, Mr. Gilliams.
What's your point of order, Mr. Hill?
He's, he's laying it out. Would you be quiet, please?
Beg your pardon?
Uh, now, go ahead and state your point of order, please.
Thank you. The city of Sebastian went into a contract with a contractor to clear the, the cemetery. There was no material bartered. The fact of the matter is, this is not a question that Mr. Gilliams is going to get an answer to. It's a question that he wants to raise, uh, some more of his BS garbage on, and, and Mr. Kilgore is not the person to answer the question. There's nothing that was bartered. So, please, move on and quit badgering our fantastic staff, Mr. Gilliam. You're badgering them, and you're, and they're great. They've done a hell of a job.
Thank, thank you, sir.
I'm just going by what the previous city manager said in his videotape, that there was over six figures...
Councilmember Gilliams, Councilmember Gilliams, I'm ruling, I'm ruling in favor of this point of order. I'm ruling in favor of Councilmember Hill on this.
It was six figures by the city manager. That's over a hundred thousand dollars.
You know, you're sometimes very difficult to talk to. I'm ruling in favor of Councilmember Hill.
This is a soft spot. I understand that.
And so, you are not to talk about the sugar sand or anything to do with that.
Let me, I think, I, listen, I'll move on, Mr. Mayor. I, I just was curious how they were going to write that and bartered, bartered off. That's all. Obviously, I'll get with Ken later. We'll figure it out. Uh, the capital improvements, uh, the twenty-seven million over six years, uh, that's where you have the million-dollar sewer services at the airport, Ken? Page, uh, eighteen?
That is included in the twenty-seven million, yes.
Right. That's what I was referring to? The sewer services, right, that the county, is that the sewer services that the county recap into their, recap into their lines?
The million-dollar project is using grant funds and contributing two-hundred thousand dollars out of DST funds as a matching portion. So, the million dollars is a total of being, being spent on the West Side service to the airport.
Right, right. So, it's eight hundred by the taxpayers and two-hundred thousand by the grant money? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Or is it the other way around?
It's all taxpayers, but two-hundred thousand is city funds versus...
Just, 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 just...
Gotcha. Thank you. You clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, now, Councilmember Gilliams, I got another point of order from Councilmember Hill. Go ahead, sir.
I'll let, I'll let that guy speak. I never interrupted him.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Right now, the, the question that's going on is about the budget itself. We're talking about the millage rate. If Mr. Gilliams doesn't want the, the millage rate to be what it, what, what is proposed, then he can vote no. But the fact of the matter is, we're going to go through this budget at another time. We have hearings for this stuff. I, I understand that he doesn't understand how this stuff goes. But the fact is, we're talking about whether or not we're going to pass the millage. He can say no. It's fine. But, but let's try to keep this thing on point.
I have two, I have two or three more questions, and I'll be done, Mr. Hill.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna...
All right, just two more questions.
Okay, you got two more questions. I'm going to rule in your favor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, I understand the rollback. I'd like to see rollback. I don't want to see the, the two-point-nine. I think we should set it at two-point-nine and shoot for rollback, and there should be no tax increase. We have plenty of reserves on hand. There's plenty of, there's plenty of, uh, care money coming into this community, nine-hundred thousand from the federal government. We're spending money like, and I don't need to go into that, there's a lot of money going around that I don't think is necessary to be spent, and I think that we should be shooting for the rollback rate. And just so that the other council members understand that the, uh, the rollback rate, Ken, do you know what the rollback rate is?
Two-point-eight-zero-nine-one.
Two-point-eight-zero? So, if we set the two-point-nine now to advertise for the trim notice, right? Between now and then, you can possibly get it down to the rollback rate, and we don't have to raise taxes at all.
But you could very well wish that you had some flexibility for something that may happen between now and then.
This is true. We're going to need some flexibility on five-hundred thousand dollars worth of drawings. I'll turn my time over to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Or, or, Mayor Dodd, we may, we may need flexibility on the millions of dollars in litigation that this person has...
We have insurance, Jim. Jim, we have insurance. How about the annexation?
Councilmember Hill, Councilmember Gilliams.
That's what we're talking about, Jim. We're being sued over annexation.
Councilmember Gilliams, will you cease?
Well, you want to get him under control?
Will you cease, please?
Sure, I'll do that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hill, uh, thank you for your comments. All right. Is anyone else on the council having anything you want to say? All right, I have one thing I want to say, and then, then we're going to go to a vote. Uh, for the last three years, this council, not this council, but the city council that was in effect for the last three years and set these numbers, moved the city's budget to or below rollback. Three years ago, rollback was three-point-four-nine-three, and we set a three-point-four budget. So, believe me, the two people who are sitting on this council tonight, myself and Councilmember Hill, have not been frivolous in establishing your tax rate at all. The city budget has, the, the, the city staff has done a Herculean job, given what's happening today in this, in this world, to try to set their, uh, their budget at a, um, at a millage rate that is as generous as we can be, uh, actually, without even increasing the millage rate. And I think we do need the buffer, and so, I'm in favor of the motion. And if anyone else wants to comment, let's just do a roll call on the motion, please. The motion is...
Public comment, Mayor. Mayor, public comment.
Yes, sir.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Public comment on this. Anyone in the public have a comment on this?
Hi, Andrea Ring. Um, you used to be on the Budget Committee. I was just wondering if this budget held, um, monies to do a baffle box at the Seventeenth Street?
I, I, I can't answer that. I, I'll, we'll do that when we look at the budget. I'm not sure there's a baffle box at Seventeenth Street in here or not. No, there's not in the capital improvement budget, no. So...
Can we make sure we put it in this year?
Okay, uh...
But that's okay. All right. I have two, two questions.
Okay, go ahead.
The other one is, um, our great team, uh, with the, um, Brian and his, um, test management, there is a piece of equipment that they can use that has been put on hold because of the virus. Um, can we make sure that we can get that in this year?
They're working through that process.
They're working through that one, too. Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle Morris. I have to say how appalled I am at how only two council members spoke up in opposition of a council member grilling of a department head. I mean, that is uncalled for. That is absolutely unprofessional. Mr. Kilgore has been an outstanding member of our city staff for many years. He has presented the budget professionally every year, and for the other two council members not to speak up in his defense is absolutely deplorable. And you all want us to be civil here? However, you have a council member who thinks he can use city staff as his whipping post. And that is absolutely unacceptable. I, I just, I don't even know what to say. As a thirty-six-year member of this community, I don't think I've ever seen something as atrocious as this. I mean, absolutely appalling. And I'm pretty sure all of these people behind me are going to say the same thing. You all should never allow any council member to talk to city staff this way. And I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor, but the other two know who I'm speaking about, and they need to grow a spine and start speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Vera Rinder, eight-fifty-two Mulberry Street, Sebastian, Florida. As a taxpayer in this city since nineteen-eighty-four, I would rather pay extra taxes and maintain the city that I have without the histrionics from the disrespectful council members. With a lovely city that we've had for thirty-six years, I'd much rather pay more taxes. And I'm on a fixed income. It's not like I got a lot of money. But I would rather pay my taxes to have this city taken care of and protected, particularly from the litigation that's coming because of behavior. But I would be willing to pay more than we have to maintain the services that I have. And I am embarrassed that we're sitting here talking about no increase in salaries to our employees when we've got people who, on the council, are concerned about other people losing their jobs to make a car that's made in America. Canton, Mississippi is another factory for Nissan where they make those, those vehicles. So, if you're concerned about the citizens, start representing us, not your special interests.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, sir. My name is Tracy Cole, and I also am very upset at the way council treats the city employees, not only here at the meetings, but also in email form that, when I request the email. Very disrespectful. And to say that the litigation that they have caused is covered by insurance, all of us know that if we make a large millions of dollars of claims on our insurance, it's going to raise our rates. So, to act like, oh, well, insurance will just pay for it, is a lie, because it'll raise the rates, and we will have to end up paying for it. So, we have done everything we can do to get the people that are going to raise our rates and act like they can set our tax rates when they don't even pay their taxes. So, I would like to just encourage you, Mayor, please, to control the council members that are disrespectful to our staff, and also to encourage a way that our staff can get raises in the future.
Hi, my name is Grace Reed, in Sebastian. I, like others, am very appalled at the way this gentleman has been treated tonight by certain council member. Do I want my taxes to go up? Absolutely not. But I read that packet. I looked at that presentation. I was unable to go to that meeting last night. I was only able to catch the last twenty minutes. But I can guarantee you, I looked over that whole thing. And I'll tell you something else about CARES money. So don't count on the CARES money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Nun, Sebastian, Florida. Worked for local government for 12 years, and we didn't get raises for six years, and the taxpayers, instead of them taking a small increase to cover the expenses of the county, they took it from the employees. Employees should never bear the burden of a city's expenses. They're employees to run a city. Next, treating a staff member like he has been treated tonight is so disrespectful. That man works very, very hard for the city, and it's just, it's outlandish. I'm surprised that very few council members asked questions. Some just sit there and just fly, like, I guess there's a meeting going on, I should participate. As far as the lawsuits, every insurance policy that's covered has a deductible. We're going to need the extra money to cover the deductible for those insurance policies in those lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Flynn. I live on Main Street. I'd just like to also reiterate what everybody else says. In addition, I've been talking to a lot of residents about drainage problems and culvert problems and stuff like that. We do need a buffer, because a wise man always plans ahead of time in case there's an emergency. If you don't need it, then you can reduce it a little bit next year. Let's not be foolish and pay our taxes when they're due. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? All right, we have a motion on the floor.
I have three people on Zoom.
Oh, how many? Three? All right, bring them in.
Andrea?
Hi, Andrea Coy, Sebastian. Taxpayer who pays their taxes on time. I don't know if anyone really appreciates how historic this moment is, because we have a council member who has been known over the last, what, 20 years, Jim? For being rollback Jim, Jim Hill. This is the first time I have heard him vote to, on the millage rate, to have it where it's set, and he's doing it for the right reasons. All the time I used to argue with him to have the buffer, he never said yes. But indeed, this time, there's a lot of good reasons. We do not know what these lawsuits are going to do. And so I appreciate Councilmember Hill's thoughtfulness this time, because we need the buffer. And, you know, I remember saying for years and years and years, hurricanes, you always need the money for hurricanes, it takes so much money. Well, look at that. We have $5 million from quite some time ago that's still sitting out there that's owed. So if we have another hurricane, you know, we're still waiting on one from a couple years ago. So you need the money for that buffer. This is the right decision. Right now, you can always lower it once, hey, when you get that windfall and you can find it in the budget, fine. But to suggest that we don't need it now is foolish. It's foolhardy. And, oh, by the way, the suggestion, I agree with everyone. Mr. Kilgore's treatment this evening was horrendous. An apology is owed to him, so I will apologize, since I know the council member won't. Mr. Kilgore, there was no reason for you to be talked to like that, and I am so sorry. You're a wonderful man, and you've done a great job over the many years. So please accept my apology. And one other thing. Mention was made of how would the taxpayers feel about yada, yada, yada? Well, as a taxpayer, let me tell you something. This is how I feel about the waste of money for lawsuits, and the waste of money and taxpayers' time to be arguing back and forth up there. How many meetings have we wasted staff time? What a waste of money. As a taxpayer, I'm furious, and I'm not furious at four out of the five council members, just one, who is wasting all of our time, doesn't pay taxes on time like the rest of us, and has the nerve to say, what are other people going to do with this higher rate? That's just plain outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person from Zoom.
Sharon Herman?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Sharon Herman, Sebastian, Florida. I'm really sorry I can't be there in person, but I've been traveling, so I chose to quarantine myself. I just really cannot believe that Mr. Kilgore and, from what I hear, the other city employees are allowed to be berated for their presentations and recommendations. I find it not only appalling and rude that one of our council members would choose to do this. I agree with Mr. Hill. He needs to, we need to go through this budget. We need to accept that our costs are going to be variable right now. I didn't see anywhere in the budget that allowed for the lawsuits, except that I mentioned of the lawsuits against the city, for the Sunshine Lawyers, Mr. Barfield and his group, for not only the suit that they've brought, but they keep saying that they're going to have pending increased charges, which of course translates to pending increase in dollars. And also, we've got that $30,001 lawsuit that Mr. Gilliams, the council member, has chosen to charge the city with himself. 2.9 bare bones budget doesn't include legal fees, it doesn't include deductibles, it doesn't include pending insurance rate increases, and it doesn't include anything that might be coming down the pike. Anybody that does a normal household budget knows, you can't just say, okay, this is our budget, and nothing is going to increase. We get increases. They're talking about this being one of the worst hurricane seasons of the year. We have to allow for that. I think that the presentation that Mr...
Kilgore.
No, I lost his name. Yes, did, was clear and concise, and as the council said, it still is up for, you know, discussion, and it still needs to be gone through more clearly. But seems to me that the council members ought to be able to read it as well as the citizens can. And no councilman should be, need to be convinced or educated by another council person. If we've got council persons on the city council that need to be convinced and educated by another member, then maybe they shouldn't be sitting on the council, because they should be capable of reading their information and making their decisions on their own. And if they can't do that, then perhaps they need to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. One more on Zoom?
I actually have more people. Still got three more to go.
Go ahead and bring them in, then.
Do you want to let this gentleman talk first?
Okay, Mr. Hocker, go ahead and come up to the mic. I know you're back. I'll get you if you stand there too long.
Yeah, Ben Hocker, Sebastian. You're here to do the millage rate. I've listened to about 10 people so far, so diversified from the millage rate. You've got people calling in, directing again, not to you, Mr. Mayor, but making the innuendos to three people or four people on the commission. How about cutting it down to the fact that you're here to do the millage rate, not having Andrea and everybody else calling in bad-mouthing council members? Thank you.
Thank you. Now bring the next Zoom person in.
Mr. Scalzari?
Hey, I'd like to thank the council for letting me get my opportunity to speak. Ken, you are awesome. We appreciate you here in the city. As far as all the other people getting up there and cast guys and council members for the way they talk, debate is always good, and it's needed in a forum. You know, there's always going to be that one guy that disagrees with another person, and they want to convince that other person that he's right, and that's the only time they have to do it on council. I kind of, I get a little bit upset when, you know, I hear people stepping up there, and particularly the last week or prior to Ben, that stated that there's no reason to have to convince another council member. We all know that this is what needs to be done, because some people don't agree. So with that being said, again, I want to thank Ken for all the hard work he's done over the years. He's incredible. I think he's the best thing that's ever happened to our city. And also, I'd like to have Jim Hill stop with the, "May Dodd, May Dodd, May Dodd, can we stop? May Dodd." You know, it gets really annoying. Thank you.
Next person on Zoom.
Mr. McCarlin?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's Bob McCarlin from Sebastian. Again, I've been listening to the whole thing. Mr. Kilgore does the most fantastic job over probably a decade for the city of Sebastian. There's a reason we hold reserves. I think it was Sam Marcos up in the Panhandle with the hurricane a couple of years ago. They got devastated, and it cost probably twice as much as they had in reserves to put forward, and that's why we hold reserves. Once you crack that piggy bank, you can't get it back. And we lay out that money, and again, like many of the speakers have said, I'm sick and tired of beating up staff. Mr. Kilgore is the best financial person you could ever see. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any more on Zoom?
One more.
All right.
Mr. Stevens?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, letting me speak. I'll be quick. I appreciate you letting us talk on this, you know, but everybody's talking about this lawsuit money, lawsuit money, lawsuit money. Gentlemen, we filled that City Hall meeting last year and told you that this wasn't what we wanted to do. And Mr. Hill says, oh, but we know best, we're going to do, we feel comfortable doing. Well, it didn't work out, Miss Hill. So, you know, the lawsuit's on you guys, if you ask me. The environmentalists want you to just sit down and do the right thing for the community. So stop with the lawsuits. I don't understand your old bit here. An $8 million airport? Why do we need this airport right now? New cars for everybody? Come on, pull the cars back in. Do a budget on the place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
You're done.
Fantastic. All right. The motion on the floor that I made is that we approve the requested millage rate of 3.1514. It was seconded by Councilmember Hill. Let's have a roll call, please.
It was seconded by Vice Mayor Marty.
Oh, Vice Mayor Marty, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the roll call, I just want to extend out to Ken that I was not intending to belittle anybody. I was just asking questions and looking for answers. I don't know what meeting these other people are at, but, you know, I have nothing against Ken. I know he does a great job, and again, my questions are very direct. They were not meant to belittle anybody whatsoever, and if you took it that way, which you did, I apologize, but I don't think that was my intent. My intent was get my answers, and if Jim Hill and the mayor stopped interrupting me, then I wouldn't have to shout over you guys. I would just kindly ask the questions so I can get the answers for the people in this community. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm ready to move forward and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now let's have the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
No on tax increases. No.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, we go on to item C, which is approval of a sub-grant agreement between the city of Sebastian and Indian River County for CARES Act funding in the amount of $924,322, and authorization the city manager to complete and sign the necessary documents to include transmittal request, agreement, and guidelines, and report. Now, this is only for the approval of the city accepting the grant. We have the next item in our packet is another issue that relates to the grant. So we're only talking about providing city manager the approval to accept the grant. Would you like to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so the county received the CARES Act funding. The smaller counties were only, received the first 25%. The larger counties received all their money upfront. Our challenge is, the county just received their agreement from the state. They sent this over to me on Thursday so that we could get our $925,000. This money has a very short timeframe to be spent, because we have to prove to DEO or FDEM that we did the right thing with the dollars. So this has to be expedited, and we need to get this next process done, because we have to have all of our stuff sent to the county by the 28th of July, and we have to have this done by September, and spend as much of this $925,000 to help the businesses and employees out and cover our costs and expenses for the COVID and what we're doing with employees and our employees that were home under the FMLA Act, and those things are funded through this. This reimburses the city for our costs, plus it provides us opportunity to do other things for the community. So it's imperative that we get this moving forward.
Okay, to me, this is a slam dunk, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve the sub-grant agreement between the city of Sebastian and Indian River County for the CARES Act funding and authorize the city manager to complete and sign the necessary documents. And I'll second that. We have a second from Vice Mayor Marty, so if there's any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that if the city manager can elaborate on some of the other funding that's also taking place as far as community assistance, so that the people know that it's not just going to be the city of Sebastian, but the Health Department, the Economic Development, community support, there's going to be funds out there, and people should inquire. And I just want to remind the city manager, testing is an issue here in the North County, and we need more testing, and we also need tracking and tracing. This is going to get out of hand, like I've been saying for three months now. March 9th, I sent a letter to you, a little memo. Please look into testing. And here's the money. It finally came here. We could...
Okay, are you in favor of approving the grant?
We could have had this stuff here already, and now we're in a rush to spend it. If we would have used some of our money, we could have, I read the agreement, we could have reimbursed ourselves.
Are you in favor of this?
Mr. Mayor, I have to address this. One, the tests that he wants us to get are not available. I've been trying since March 9th to get tests, so I don't want to grandstand, and I usually don't respond. I've been working with another company to get tests here. Yes, this funding can pay for testing, and I'm working on that. I said that earlier. I want it to be clear. You know, I sit here quietly, and I don't lose my temper, but I'm telling you, I'm not mad, I'm just letting you know that I've given this information to him, and I've sent this information to him and told him what I'm working on. I've tried for three different companies. There's no, I have not been able to get tests. The Arizona tests are not for us. We can't get the testing thing from Arizona. We need to move this forward so we can do some of those things, wherein I can get it available.
So I agree with that. The question now is, the motion is to approve the sub-grant agreement, and if there's any comments on whether we do or do not approve it, I'd like to hear those.
Amen, brother. I approve.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote.
Public comment.
I'm sorry?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this? Anyone on Zoom?
Yes. Mr. Herman?
Sorry, Mayor Dodd. I just wanted to say, you know, everybody's got their information. The city manager has been doing an outstanding job trying to find the information. Give it a rest and get it completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's have a roll call. The motion was to approve the sub-grant agreement and to allow the city manager to authorize, authorize the city manager to complete and sign the necessary documents.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now we're on Agenda Item Number D under New Business. Now, this is a Resolution 20-10, which approves COVID-19 Recovery and Stimulus Grant Plan Application Process for submitted, submitted to Indian River County for preapproval. Now, I'm not going to read all the details on this. I'll let the city manager talk about it, but basically, this is a grant program from the city of Sebastian to cities, small businesses, and employees that will grant, that will provide grants to the small businesses and employees who apply and are approved. The reason that's to be submitted to the county is that we have to go through the process of proving to the county that we're using the COVID-19 money correctly, and they have to agree to the program. Mr. City Manager, would you like to...
Yeah, and I have to give Ken the credit, because he researched all of the different cities throughout the state and counties that are doing these grants to the different, for businesses and to employees, and put this together. We made a couple edits to it, but Ken did the yeoman's job in putting this together. And what this does, it allows businesses, first of all, there were businesses that didn't qualify for the CARES Act or the Payroll Protection Plan, because they didn't have a certain number of employees, they didn't have a certain ability to apply. This will be something that they can apply for to $5,000, up to $5,000 for businesses, and up to $500 for the employees that worked for those businesses. And we're asking that those employees that are delinquent, that they can have a delinquent light bill or something, that they get priority over the process. And so this is, this has to get preapproved by the county. Once we approve it, then I can put it on my list of items to do. It is one of the items in the funding availability list from DEO, that it is eligible, but we need the county has to also agree to it as part of our spending plan.
Yeah.
But this is something we can reach out, I think what we find, 576 commercial businesses in the city can reach out and get up to $5,000. And it's first come, first served, and once the money's expended and we get the next set of funding, then we can start the grant program over again.
And the next set of funding, if it all goes the way we'd like to see it go, is going to be probably about $3 million, right?
Yeah, our challenge...
Total's $3 million.
Hmm?
The total amount out of the $27 million is $3 million.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Total amount, $3 million.
So the challenge that we're going to have is when we turn this over to the DEM, who does our reimbursements for hurricanes, also has to review our reports before they release the additional money. And by the way, this all has to be spent by December 30th.
Right, right. And one of the nice things about having $5 million in reserves is we can afford to put out $924,000 in knowing we're going to be reimbursed for it eventually, and it doesn't bankrupt the city. Okay, now, a couple of things about this I want to cover, if I don't, if you don't mind. First of all, part of this $924,000 is going to be used for administration... for administration of this program. Do you have a number on what you think that might run?
You know, it could be ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars. Ken?
And then, Ken, do you have?
It depends on how many applications and the information we have to go through.
Okay. I don't need a hard number, I just want to make sure people know that we're gonna use, we're gonna pay for the application, we're gonna pay for the process of the applications and so forth out of the funds themselves, correct?
Yes.
We will track our hours and, mostly staff expenses, so it'd just be a matter of accumulating those hours and pricing them out.
And part of this nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars is gonna go to reimburse the city for the expenses we've already incurred for COVID-19, like overtime and buying PPE and stuff like that.
Correct.
We've had about fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars of accumulated costs to date.
All right, and on page one sixteen of one thirty-three in the packet, there's, it actually lays out, and I agree, Ken did a great job in putting this together, it lays out the things related to the program. And basically, this is for businesses that have twenty full-time and/or part-time employees or less. It's not for larger businesses, they qualify for the PPP, the P3 fund from the United States, from the federal government. There's one change I'd like to talk about making to this. On item number four, on page one thirteen of your packet, or one sixteen of your packet, excuse me. Item number four says, must be a small business that as of March one, two thousand and twenty, had at least two employees or independent contract workers, but no more than twenty. I had kind of an epiphany this afternoon, had a conversation with the city manager. There are a lot of people, and I don't know how many, a lot might be twenty, that work in places like barber shops and beauty shops, that really are businesses unto themselves, and they rent chairs. And they would be disqualified from this if we keep that minimum of two on there. So what I would like to do is to change that sentence to say, must be a small business that as of March first, two thousand and twenty, has had no more than twenty full-time or part-time employees. And that would allow those single proprietor individuals who are, for example, they're a barber, and they run a business, they're a single proprietor, they pay business taxes, they can provide you all of the forms that you want to see from the federal government, but they're the only employee of their business. It would allow them to apply for these grants.
Agree, agree.
I second that motion.
Okay, so that one change I'd like to make to this. The second one I'm sorry? Yeah, I haven't made a motion yet, I'm just going through the changes, trying to get Ken to kind of motion this thing. I'm gonna make a motion in a second on this, if I can.
Okay, I think I may be way behind, I think something may be happening with Zoom right now. So I'm not sure if you're hearing me.
Okay.
But I think that's fantastic, I think you should make a motion, and I would second it.
All right. The second thing is, on the next page on item number four, and this pertains to the five hundred dollars that employees can apply for. The way this reads, employees, once a business applies, that their employees, as long as they have less than twenty, can apply for the grant at the same time. So, is that correct, Ken?
That is correct, but I would clarify, it's city residents only.
Okay, I'm sorry?
The employee has to be a city resident.
Yes, the employee has to be a city resident, and so the business applies, and then the business's employees would apply for the individual employee grant. Item number four is the thing that the city manager mentioned, where an employee can provide information about past due rents or utilities, and it gives them a preference in the allocation of the money. What I'd like to do is remove the word "must" from there, so employees who aren't behind can apply. They'll be put in a queue behind those who are, who can prove that they're behind in a payment, but they still, you're not disqualifying them from applying. Does that sound unreasonable to do that?
No.
A business has an employee who is not behind in their rent, but they're struggling still. I have an individual, I know that their business was closed for six and a half weeks, and they've received zero unemployment from anybody.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
And they're not behind, but they're having an awfully hard time making payments. And so, what we're saying here is they must be behind. I'd like to take the word "must" off and let them apply, and if, in fact, we have enough money, we can then grant them the five hundred dollars.
Sure.
Does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now, does anybody have anything else they would like to make to this? Because I'll make a motion, but I want to make sure there's
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to suggest a modification to number one. Must be for a for-profit, privately held, small independently owned and operated business currently maintaining a commercial physical storefront. I just, in this digital age, you know, I would prefer to see as long as they're functioning within the city limits as a corporation legally. I know a couple of IT businesses and people who work from home legally that are suffering as well.
Actually, I picked up the wording storefront from a couple of other examples I had gone in. I had a question this afternoon, actually, that what is a storefront? You know, does that have to be a retail store, or could it be a warehouse, or could it be a real estate office, or? So I would, I think most every program I looked at anyway said they would have, at least have to have a physical location.
I don't have any issue with that, the physical location thing. And now, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in a storefront, the physical location wouldn't, would it?
It could be space out of a office building that's used for a hairdresser or whatever.
Yeah, Councilmember Hill, you have something?
Well, I think if they have a business license with the City of Sebastian, that should cover it, whether they're out of their house or out of a storefront, or working for someone in a storefront, if they have a business license with the City of Sebastian, I think that would be
This thing actually excludes home-based businesses, correct?
It does.
It does exclude home-based businesses right now.
And, Mr. Mayor, the reason that is, is home-based businesses were not shut down.
They weren't shut down. So I think one of the reasons for, and when I looked at that, I didn't have any problem with it, because I'm thinking about people who the state shut down, and they didn't close down realtors, they didn't close down some people, they were still allowed to work. Now, they may have had a hard time finding customers, but they weren't physically closed down because of COVID. Bars were, restaurants were, you know, beauty parlors were, gyms were, so.
You know, Mr. Mayor, with the five-hundred-and-seventy-six physical businesses, commercial businesses, if they all applied, that's two-point-five million.
Yeah, no, you're out of money quick. Yeah. And that, that's a question we might want to ask ourselves, is what percentage of this money do we want to?
Well, we're gonna have to keep back some of this, this is only one part of it. We have to keep back some funds to cover some of our additional expenses that will continue off to December thirtieth, and we'll have to set aside funds for other portions of it, like testing and things of that nature. We'll have to decide all that and send that to the county for their approval.
But do we reserve a percentage of the pot that goes to these grants for individual grants versus business grants? Or do the business grants possibly take up all the money?
That's gonna be determined on who applies.
Okay.
And the employee grants do have to be submitted along with the business grant.
Along with the business grant.
That was one of the criteria, so we will know. And we were looking at it first in, you know, first come, first served.
And then, is the intent to, for those people, that there's not enough funds to grant to in this round, assuming that we move forward to the second round of funding? Would the intent be to then use that funding to attempt to fund those
That's correct.
Those received grants?
That's correct.
So everybody who has applied by September thirtieth may get served in this round of funding, but they may, they may then, the ones who don't may get served in the next round of funding.
If we get the funding.
Okay, if we get the funding, all right.
But you're realistically only gonna have about seven-hundred-thousand, seven-hundred-thousand in this funding for grants because of the other things that we want to do with the funding.
Okay. Do you still have, are you, with the change you were talking about?
I understand, I understand. I want to remind the public also that the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce is offering grants as well to small businesses, because they all need it.
Does anybody have anything else they want to say on this?
Well, you know, the other thing, Mr. Mayor, is that your grant's up to five thousand dollars, maybe we should cut that back to three. Doesn't have to be five, and it'll go further.
I don't know.
I mean, five thousand for a small business, a lot of money.
Yeah, but it has to be, it has to make a difference. You know, the whole point of this is, are we gonna be able to make a difference? Just giving somebody money to make them feel good, if it doesn't make a substantial difference, then you really didn't, you really didn't do anything.
Yeah. Well, the City of Miami, I think, issued one-thousand-five-hundred to all the businesses down there, from what I understand.
They just gave it to everybody, they didn't have a grant, an application process.
Yeah, and they just
They just gave it to everybody. I mean, if we were to take all the, what, there's a thousand and some business licenses or something like that, if we were to just give money to all those, we'd be giving them fifty bucks or something like that, so.
Well, the thing is, is I don't know how that would get approved by the county, and if DEO would approve that, I can't speak for Miami, and I can't speak for whether our program's gonna be funded back by the, or they're gonna be challenged by the state. I think that we have to show some level of assurance that we're doing money rather than just giving money away.
I think five thousand dollars is reasonable, I agree with you. It has to, I mean, if someone can't make a monthly rent payment for their business out of this, we're not helping them a whole lot, I don't think, you know?
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
I think the idea here is to get the money out to the people. So let's just go forward, let's take public input on this, and let's figure out if this, if this council wants to help provide assistance to our businesses. We don't need to convolute it with a whole bunch of other, you know, input and distractions. This is well done by our staff. Again, our staff is exceptional, so let's just take public input on this and then move forward and get this money to the citizens and the businesses in Sebastian, who need it.
Anybody got anything else?
I, you know, I'd like to see, I think five thousand's a lot of money. I think we can cover more people by cutting that in half, twenty-five-hundred, it's still a good amount of money. I think that we can cover more people, make more people happy, and, you know, the federal government
Let's do a straw poll on the five, on that change, how's that, before we
Sure.
Instead of motions? Vice Mayor Marty, do you think about the difference between five thousand?
I would say, I would say leave it right at the five thousand.
Okay. And I'd say the five thousand is a good number.
All right.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna put a motion on the floor. A motion is that we approve, that we approve Resolution R twenty-dash-ten, which is approving the COVID-19 Recovery and Stimulus Grant Plan application with two changes. Change number one is on page one sixteen of our packet, and that is to item number four, to remove the at least two employees or independent contract workers from that first sentence. So it reads, must be a small business that as of March one, two thousand and twenty, had no more than twenty full-time or part-time employees or independent contractors. And the second change is that on the next page, one seventeen of our packet, that on item number four, we remove the word "must" from the beginning of that sentence and start the sentence with "show evidence of being part." I will tell everybody out there that this is, this program is a great, is well put together, it does require that people prove they're a business, this isn't gonna be a windfall for somebody who's not doing anything, it's a good program.
A second's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to tell Ken, great job, Ken, you did a good job.
Do you have any public comment? I have one person coming up. And anybody on Zoom, raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Christopher, I'm in Sebastian, Florida. I was just curious if there's any provisions in there that if a business is behind on its taxes, if it would be available for them to apply for this grant?
Well, it does stipulate they cannot have any outstanding, outstanding code lengths, but not taxes, it doesn't stip, so you get the five thousand, you can pay taxes with it if you had to, I'm sure. I lost code violations there for a minute. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, sir, my name is Tracy Cole. I would also like to ask what the timeframe is, since some council members own small businesses, can they go ahead and apply for that first before it's been advertised out to other small businesses?
No, no application can be made until the advertisement is done correctly. It has to be approved by the county. Once the county approves it, it'll be put together by the city manager and the chief financial officer, and then it'll be advertised correctly. And no one, he'll accept no app. That guy over there, he won't take any applications till it's all properly done, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was fair for all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
Ms. Shannon?
Hi, Sharon Herman, Sebastian. Good changes, Mayor Dodd, for the statements, for the program. I wanted to take Ms. Cole's statement one step farther, and are council members allowed to apply for claims if it's a first come, first served, or will they be waiting to the end of the line? Which kind of seems, which would be the honorable thing to do, is let the city business people let their claims in first, but I just wanted to know if there was any provisions for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, there are no provisions for that. It's for small businesses. So as long as you fit the requirements and you have the proper paperwork, you can do an application. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. Let's have a roll call vote on this, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we're on to item number D. Or is it D? No, it's E. Okay, the city was notified on April, that's not right, it wasn't April the second, two thousand and twenty, that this letter was sent, was it? That's what the date is on the top of it.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty? Was it? That we received an additional seventy-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars in grant money? Okay. And what this is, is approving the additional grant administration services from Guardian CRM, Inc. They're gonna administer this grant like they're administering the original on our grant, their grant service administration's fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. This money is being used, we discussed this and set out parameters under which to use this money earlier this year, I believe, and this money's being used in proportion for the same thing. So it's one more pot of funds that we're receiving under the CARES Act to be able to spend to support city services. Do I have a motion on this? Motion for approval?
Second.
All right. Motion by the Vice Mayor to approve this and seconded by Councilmember Paris. Is there any discussion? No? Let's have a voice vote, please.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment, sorry. Anyone from the public want to discuss this? Anyone on Zoom?
No one.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a voice vote on this, please.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the item that we added, item number G, which was a handout that you received this evening when you got here, is the agreement between the City of Sebastian and Indian River County School Board for two school resource officers, one at Sebastian Elementary School and one at Pelican Island Elementary School. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Yeah, I saw at the budget meeting that they said three, so I'm kind of confused.
So the two are for Indian River County School, and the third one is for the Charter School off Wave Street, and they're finishing their negotiations of their contract and just got it back to the chief, I believe, yesterday, and it's went over to Manny. This agreement is the one we've used with Indian River County Schools for two years, and council said bring it back every year. and council said bring it back every year. Originally, we had a three-year term, and, and you asked that it be brought back every year. It is a fifty-fifty cost share because half the time the gov, the, the, when the schools close, they, um, we use them in other areas of the city. Uh, we did just get this back. They had a bunch of change in personnel. We would have gotten this to you sooner, but there was a bunch of change in personnel in the school, and the chief was having a hard time getting this out of them, and we just got this, and we got it to you as quickly as we could. So I apologize for the late addition to the agenda.
Okay. And the, uh, the charter school, is the fact that we are not able to approve that contract tonight going to impede our issue?
They're completely shut down. They don't know when they're going to open, so.
Okay.
We can't do anything with it till we get it from them, until we, well, we're going to review it. We just got it, and Manny's got to review it, but, and.
But they haven't announced their opening date yet?
They have not.
Okay.
But they've been completely closed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
I.
One second, Councilmember Hill.
No, I'll let Jim go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Hill.
I move approval.
Uh, I'll second that now.
Okay. I, and I know that we're pushing this through quickly because it's short notice, but as I mentioned before in the transmittal, I'd like to see the attorney sign off on these legal documents. That's all. I think it's important that we have an attorney on staff here, and can't hurt him to take a look at it and review it.
And I apologize, I didn't catch that in the agenda summary when the chief sent it over to me, so I do apologize.
But, and I understand you're trying to get it pushed through, so.
Okay, all right.
But for the record, I did review it.
Okay.
Okay, it, um, these, these, uh, these school resource officers are important, uh, they're important to the students, they're important to the schools, they're important to the, to the, uh, the, the community policing opportunity that the police department does. So, uh, I have no issue at all with this. Um, can we, we have a motion and a second?
They did that already.
I'm, I'd say we have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's do a voice vote.
Public comment.
Or public comment, I'm sorry, public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
No one.
All right, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malti?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay. City Attorney Matters.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we did, we.
Oh, I'm sorry, Florida League of Cities, this is item number F. I did skip item number F, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Florida League of Cities, uh, they're holding their annual conference, uh, this year electronically, uh, but they will have a, a voting session, and we have to designate a council member to be the voting delegate to the Florida League of Cities, so.
I move Mayor Dodd.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Public comment.
Aye.
No.
Public, public comment.
Public comment. I don't need to do public comment on this, do I? Do I really?
It's an agenda item.
Public comment. I've been railroaded, does anyone want to help me? No? Anybody on Zoom?
No one, sir.
All right. I mean, it wasn't too bad to be the voting delegate when you got it. All right, we do have a comment. Thank you. Now we're to the city attorney matters. You can vote. Oh, let's vote on, no, there was a vote on it, I think, wasn't there? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And they did that. I said no, so it was four to one. No, it's five oh.
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager.
Uh, we have a couple items, um, so we, we're concerned about the, the, the Independence Day celebration, and we moved to September fifth with this, um, COVID and how it's expanding. I need to get consensus from council if we still, we got to tell the fireworks display people to buy their fireworks or not. I'm going to leave it to the discretion of council because I'm concerned, September fifth, we could still be in a heap of positives, so I need consensus from council to tell this person whether to move or not move.
I would suggest, if I could, Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
I would suggest you move because at a very minimum, we can social distance for the fireworks. So absolutely, we move forward with this. This thing needs to happen. We need to get this done for the city.
Anybody else have any comments?
To, to purchase the, the fireworks? Is that what you're saying?
If we held the event, we've got to let them know that we're going to move this, we're going to have this event on September fifth.
What kind of a cutoff date do you have on that?
And Jim, you want to have this event?
You won't have enough time because your next meeting's not until the end of August.
Okay.
And you want to, and Jim, you want to have the event?
Absolutely, I want to have the event. Absolutely, I want to have the event. The, the event is going to be a forward for the city. You're damn right, I want to have this event. Let's go.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm against having it. I, I don't think, I think that the virus is going to get out of really big control, and we don't need to be getting down there on the river watching fireworks getting people sick, so I'm against it.
It's certainly, we can purchase the fireworks tentatively, uh, depending on the results we're, have no idea what's going to happen.
I, I can't, if I tell them to go, they're going to, they're going to spend the money, and we'll have to, we'll have to pay for it, and, you know.
And they're not storable, I mean, we can't.
Yeah, we can't store them.
But canceling, is there a fee for canceling?
We'll just move the, we've already paid the deposit. We would move this forward, we'd move the, the, the event forward, but if we tell them we're having the event and somehow we cancel it, we, we'll be, uh, we'll be on the obligation to pay for it.
I think you were right, Mr. City Manager. Let's move it down the road, let's not have it, let's wait until.
I didn't make the recommendation, I asked the question.
Yeah. Okay, so you're saying, you're saying move it.
Yeah, yeah, don't have it, move, move it down the road.
Councilmember Hill says have it, you're saying don't have it. Councilmember Paris?
I'm just completely, I, that's a really hard decision to make. Um, nobody knows what's going to happen with this virus. Our safety comes first, but people are missing celebrations. I really, I'm at a loss here, I don't know how to.
Well, you, you got to.
I know, I know, okay, um, for, for safe, all right.
One second, sir.
I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Hill, you want to say something else?
Yeah, I mean, the easy answer here is, I mean, it's, the, the financial output is already a budgeted item, and so, so we can put that money out, and the worst-case scenario is we can't do it, and there's a loss. But the best-case scenario, which is the one I believe in, is that we can, that we can do it, that we can move forward, that, that this thing is going to be actually realized, and we can have a celebration in Sebastian. I mean, you can have fifty people in your bar without masks playing pool, but you can't have fireworks in the city of Sebastian? Come on! Of course we should go forward with this.
Vice Mayor Malti?
I'm concerned about the social distancing, how we control that.
Councilman Hill?
I beg your pardon?
I said, is there any comment on controlling social distancing?
I would absolutely comment on that. There, there's tons of ways we can do these things. There, there are festivals that are happening already. If you can social distance, and you can wear a mask, according to the CDC. You can be on the lawn in the city of Sebastian and be sixty apart from somebody, and that's social distancing. I mean, we don't have to have parade, we don't have to have festival, we don't have to have the entire thing that is the Freedom Festival in Sebastian, but the fireworks is easy, man. All we have to do is an outside event, all we have to do is be on the lawn. If you can't be six feet apart from somebody, and this is like, I'm two months away, but if you can't be six feet apart from somebody, put a mask on. We can deal with this, man, it's easy.
But people don't, that's the problem. People don't look around, but people are six feet apart here and they're not wearing masks, I mean.
Mr. Mayor, we have not, we have not started, we've got twenty-five thousand people, correct? In this community? Mr. City Manager?
We don't know how many people will show up for it, but.
We've got twenty-five thousand people, we haven't tested any of them. We don't know what's going on out there in the community. I say play it on the safe side. We don't need to spread this, it's serious, the state of Florida is on fire. The warnings are there, the warnings are there.
I, I know you said no, so let's.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to ask another question. So, Councilmember Hill, you talked about not having the parade, this event did have the parade.
No, no, I understand that, but we can adjust the event depending upon the times, right? I mean, so, so we're talking about right now whether or not we spend the money for the fireworks and have them schedule it. We can do that whether or not we have the parade. We can do that whether or not we have the festival in the park. The fireworks are, are good, are, are, we have the ability to have the fireworks whether or not any of those other things happen. And there's tons of room in our park, we can social distance, we can wear masks, we can do whatever we want to do. There's, these festivals are taking place all the time. It's ridiculous to say we can't social distance or wear a mask, whatever it may be. I'm just saying, the fireworks are easy. That's the easy part, let's go.
Mr. Mayor, the, the Cleveland Clinic, the trust, the Indian River Hospital Trust Board, they, you know, they're raising red flags, I mean.
They just said wear a mask. Uh, okay, Councilmember Malti, Vice Mayor Malti, did you have any position on this?
Like I said, I'm just concerned about the spread of the virus. If you folks want to go ahead and have it, I'll vote for it.
Okay, uh, I, 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 I have agreements and disagreements personally with what Councilmember Hill said, but I do agree that the cost of these fireworks, uh, that it, it's a, it's a minor expense, quite frankly, uh, if we can do it, and if we have to cancel it, we have to cancel it. So I would, I would propose that we just, we go ahead and plan it. I'm not a hundred percent sure, and quite frankly, I'm probably not even fifty percent sure that we're going to be doing anything in September, personally, but I think that if, uh, I think that if we decide not to do it, and that, and that it, it turns out to be good, we're missing an opportunity. So what is the actual dollar amount we're talking about here?
I think it's twenty-five thousand is what the cost is for the fireworks.
And so I would suggest maybe that you talk, that you talk to the fireworks company about the possibility of saying they purchased it, can we use it in December? Will they, will they store the fireworks for a December display? You know, or something like that.
But we need clarif, we can do that if that's the, the direction of council, but the other thing is, is do we, do we want to cancel the parade? Because we've got to get with the people that, we don't, the city doesn't put the parade on, and we don't, we don't put the event on, so. This is a packet, this was a package that we put off to the fifth.
I personally don't think we can have a parade September the second.
I just need, I just want, I'm, I'm making a suggestion, I'm asking a question.
I can understand how people can watch fireworks with a mask on and try to social distance, but I don't think we can do a parade. The way that parades work, there's just no way you're going to do that with a parade.
Gotcha.
So I.
So Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would suggest then, I would suggest then we do it November fourth, because that's when this whole thing goes away. But, but, but let's, let's just say we're doing the fireworks, that's all we're talking about right here, is the fireworks.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to do it November fourth because it may not go away November fourth, depends on how the election goes.
Exactly.
Okay, so, uh, so the suggestion that I just, how's that set? Vice Mayor Malti, how's that set with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay, so that would be three?
I agree.
Okay, so, so go ahead and do the fireworks, talk to them about storing it, and if.
Okay.
My personal opinion, we're going to have a dynamite Earth Day celebration next year. We're going to have a gigantic Earth Day celebration next year.
Mr. Mayor, storing fireworks is not going to work. What you can do come September is have a meeting with the guy and, and then purchase for December.
Well, we, he's, he's got his direction from, we've already, already done that, three to two, so we're moving forward, or actually four to one.
Okay.
So we're moving forward on that. Okay. Um, city, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple more items, if I may. Riverview Park, that sidewalk replacement program that you all approved is going to start next week, so it'll be closed down, the sections will be closed down, and it's going to take about three weeks to do that, that project. Um, so they're going to be fencing up so people will know where that is. Uh, garbage collection, waste management is also being affected for the resident edification. They've been affected with drivers who've been, been affected and, and called out. So there's two things that have changed, and we put it on our website and that. The one is, is they went from four days notification to bulk trash, which is your furniture and things of that nature, to seven days notification. And the next thing is, is your vegetative waste is probably going to be about a day behind, but they're doing the best they can. They just, they don't have the ability to bring crews in from other areas because they're being affected. So these are things that we'll be seeing, so don't panic, they're, they're doing the best they can, but they've had a lot of callouts, and that's all I have.
Okay, City Court. All right, Councilmember Paris. Your turn.
I'd like to applaud the community for more city involvement. Um, I understand we owe some great candidates running in November, um, and, which brings me to correct a rumor about my motion for council insurance. The intention was to attract quality citizens to run, to sit on the council. I myself would opt out, I have excellent insurance, I wouldn't need it, just wanted to make that correction. As for the old signs, perhaps there's a collector in the community, um, who wants to keep one in celebration for our upcoming centennial, which will be in just a couple of years, so that's really a nice subject. My daughter's essay is actually buried under the clock at the park, so. Um, I want to remind the public that to expect debates and questions on this council, that's the only place we can do it, so you can expect it. Um, and I want to encourage everyone to unite in practicing safety, wearing masks, and social distancing. It, it has spiked, it's getting very bad, um, and I'm anxious anticipation, like the rest of you, that this virus goes away. A big thank you finally for our chief of police, he does an exceptional job, um, at keeping us safe. I'm sure it's a challenge, um, in morality, considering the state of the nation and what's happening, the behavior in the streets, so thank you so much for making us feel safe. And applaud Ken, Ken's wonderful, uh, his brilliant numbers mind is very impressive, and I don't think he, anyone intended to insult the man. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just want to comment on some of the statements that were made last week. Uh, the former chair of the Planning and Zoning Board made a statement that there were not very many people that attended the planning and zoning meeting on the annexation. I sat on that board August fifteenth, twenty nineteen. From the minutes of the August fifteenth Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Katenberg prefaced her opening remarks by announcing that due to the large number of the public attending this meeting, each person who wants to speak during the public input section of this agenda will be limited to three minutes instead of the regular five. The motion, uh, that the time limit of three minutes, uh, be set was approved, so that was that. And at the August fifteenth, twenty nineteen Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, I, as a member of this commission, made the motion that staff review the items presented by Jason Brown and County Administrator and Vincent Burke of Indian River County. Once this is done and presented to the P and Z Commission, we will then make a recommendation to the city council. For those who thought that we did not look at this item, it was looked at very carefully, and the statement that was made that we did not study this is incorrect. The other statement that some of us need education on what is going on, I find very upsetting. We do our job, I do my job, I don't need to be educated by anybody. I followed this annexation from the beginning right up to the present, so please, a lot of us do our jobs up here. Thank you. And I want to thank Ken for doing an excellent job, and Mayor Dodd for keeping control tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gilliams?
Um, Mr. Mayor, during these recess breaks that we do, we, we shut the cameras off where people at home cannot see what's going on. They get a, a blank, they get a, a slate, the city logo, and I think it's important that the cameras continue to roll throughout the whole meeting, so that everybody at home, there's full transparency here, that they don't see any deals, sidebar deals. The cameras are very evident, they, they record everything. There was a, an issue not too long ago, and when, when they, they shut the cameras down and they put that slide up, people at home are wondering what's going on. So I'd like to get a consensus of this board to keep the cameras rolling, so we have full transparency in this room while we're having meetings. Is there, is there a way we can get a consensus, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I can ask. I, I would like, though, before I ask, just so everybody here is full, has full transparency, is what sidebar deals are you talking about?
I'm not getting into that, Mr. Mayor, please.
Well, I, I, please, I mean, you're saying, you're saying that there was something done.
Mr. Mayor?
And I, I, I don't, I can't support you unless I know what it is.
Mr. Mayor, let's not get specific. This is my time, Mr. Hill.
The only thing I've seen done, Mayor Dodd.
Mr. Hill, this is my time.
Councilmember Hill, would you?
Your time is after me.
Wait a second, please.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Councilmember Hill, wait a second, please.
I know you, you think you own the place, but be patient.
Okay.
So I'd like to get a consensus. I think it's important to this community, full transparency, run the cameras, we have nothing to hide. Let them see what's going on in here.
All right. I, I, you're, you're asking for a consensus, and my, my opinion on your consensus is no. Mr. Hill, your opinion?
Wait a minute, wait, I'm not doing it.
On wait, you're asking, you're asking for that, and I'm giving you the answer.
I want, I want to appeal that. I want, Mr. Mayor, I want to appeal that.
I find it hilarious that Mr. Gilliams is making accusations about council members having some sidebar thing, when if we had the cameras rolling when he accosted our city attorney a couple meetings ago and got in his face and started yelling at him, that would have been a great.
That's not, that's not what happened, Mr. Hill. You know that, you're lying.
The fact of the matter is that we have these meetings as they are.
Is this my time to speak?
Wait a second. You asked for a consensus.
Are you running this meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Hill, he asked for a consensus, I'm asking for you to say, do you want the cameras running during breaks or not?
Absolutely not, there's no reason to have them.
Okay, Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I don't see any need to have them running during break.
All right.
What did he say?
Councilmember Paris?
Sure.
You do want them running during break?
Sure.
Okay, so it's three to two, so we're not going to change our, our operation.
Okay, who, Charles, you don't want to?
Three to two, Charles voted no, not to run them.
No?
Charles voted not to do that.
Okay, good. That's all I need to do.
Okay.